Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call to order this Monday, April 19th, 2021, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. I'm going to start, as we always do, with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, welcome. Thanks for all the members of the public who are joining us here this evening. I think there are plenty of folks here and a couple of items of interest. So looking forward to that discussion. Ms. Christensen, if you could get us started with the roll call of council members, please. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Loman.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
I'm here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Bussie.
Present. All seven members of the Bloomington City Council are in attendance this evening. Item three on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And as we move forward with it, I just want to point out for members of the public who are tuning in, we've got our hearings and resolutions. We actually have seven public hearings this evening, which is a high number of public hearings. But we do have our hearings and resolutions that are listed in the agenda. As we move on to item eight, which is our organizational business, it is a discussion of our earned sick and safe leave time. It's basically a process for developing ordinance. That's not a public hearing. That'll be a discussion among the councils, more of a study meeting type of thing, as well as our legislative update. So, council, any additions or subtractions or corrections to this evening's agenda? Seeing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion by the mayor and a second by council member Martin to approve this evening's agenda. Without further discussion, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman. Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. We have an agenda for this evening. Move on to item four, which is our public comment period, which is a 20-minute period at each of our council meetings where we address items not on tonight's agenda. And we start, as we always do, with item 4.1, which is responses to previous councils or previous meetings' public comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor and council members, follow up this evening on a question asked by Mr. Thule several weeks ago. And that was regarding the city's efforts to corral shopping carts along American Boulevard that end up being off property of the stores from which they originate and belong. We have had our police department out on a number of occasions to go up and down American Boulevard and survey to see how prevalent the situation is. And fortunately, it isn't much. Now, having said that, I certainly appreciate the concerns that are raised because this is one of those issues that I think falls into the category of, you know, the livability concerns. If people see things like shopping carts or other significant eyesores or trash that's piling up in places, it gives an impression that there is maybe some disinvestment that's occurring or a lack of community care. And so certainly appreciate the comments that are made and wanting to make sure that the community remains visually attractive. The police department has never considered the shopping carts leaving the sites of stores to be a crime, a theft, as it were. One of the major retailers along that area, as we've shared before, does have sensors on the carts. And often in winter, we see more of the carts off property because the sensors tend to short out a little bit in the cold weather. The observation recently, it's not just one retailer's carts. When we see carts, they tend to be different carts. So it's from different stores. We don't have a policy of picking them up and returning. I think this is one of those efforts where we're just going to have to invest a little bit of additional time with our community service officers or others working with the retailers to see if they can be a little bit more diligent about trying to identify their carts when they wander off property. But like I said, we've done a couple sweeps recently. It's not an extensive problem. I think it's one of those things. But that when you see it, it just becomes an aggravation. And certainly appreciate the source of the concern from Mr. Thule. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions? And I do agree with the notion that it is a livability type of thing. And I think if you see a couple, it sticks out because, yes, they're out of place. And it doesn't look attractive. So I appreciate the efforts that our city staff can take to make sure we alleviate that. With that, we'll move on to item 4.2, which is the public comment period itself. It's a 20-minute period that we hold at each council meeting where we take public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. And we generally, there's the phone number. Please call in if you'd like to comment. And we have three folks who have indicated ahead of time that they would like to comment. We limit each caller's comments to five minutes, just so it's fair to everyone. And it is not a back and forth between the council and any caller. We use it to collect the information. And then at the subsequent meeting, as we've just seen, Mr. Verbrugge will respond, reply, give an answer to the questions that were raised, if appropriate. As I said, items not on tonight's agenda. And I know that we have at least three people who have called in ahead of time. So Ms. Wilson, do we have any callers looking to speak on item 4.2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zen, this is Chris. Can you hear me? Zen, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Great.
I'm here.
Zen, do we have Natalie Marose on the line?
Let me double check. One moment. Yes, we have her connected.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Marose.
Hello there.
Welcome, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Natalie Marose. Just over a week ago, the Twin Cities experienced another unfortunate and tragic interaction between the police and the public. It appears to have been a horrible accident. There's no evidence whatsoever that it was racially motivated. And at this point, seems to be a split-second decision gone wrong over a routine traffic stop and a driver trying to flee the scene instead of being taken into custody for an outstanding warrant. An investigation is underway, and until then, unsubstantiated judgment. But what happened should not be made, especially by our mayor in his official capacity. However, during the April 14th council minute, Mr. Mayor, you took the opportunity to wrongfully and inaccurately use this horrible tragedy as an example of police brutality against people of color, which could not be further from the truth. What happened in Brooklyn Center and South Minneapolis with George Floyd are not the same. And I believe you know that. But yet, you chose to once again fan the flames of racial division, when what we need is unity, not division. This is incredibly dangerous behavior, Mr. Mayor, and I'm shocked, along with others in our community. Many stopped watching the council minute before it was even over as soon as they saw you taking advantage of the situation to present a false narrative about what happened. I watched the entire thing and found myself very saddened by it. You failed to mention how difficult the job of policing is in this environment, where the police are seen as the bad guys for trying to maintain order and enforce the laws that are necessary in order to maintain a civil society. You failed to express support of our own law enforcement in Bloomington, who, God forbid, could find themselves in this exact situation at any time. Would you throw them under the bus? How can our police officers in Bloomington not wonder if our mayor will stand up for them if something tragic happens here? Or will you turn our community or would you turn our community against them by automatically assuming they are racist thugs with guns if a person of color is involved? These are tough issues to deal with. On one hand, we must all be concerned and vigilant about the kind of unfair law enforcement of the law for people of color. No one wants that. But we also have to give our police officers the ability to enforce the laws. And we must insist that all citizens and residents obey those laws. Typically, interactions with the police do not go well when sudden moves are made and arrest is resisted, no matter the skin color of those involved. What happened in Brooklyn Center is tragic all the way around, but it had nothing to do with race. To pretend that it did is race-baiting and does absolutely nothing to help the situation. Residents of Bloomington want leadership that is unbiased, that is fair, calm, and thoughtful, and does not rush to judgment when things like this happen. That is the kind of leadership that we expect and the kind of leadership we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
Zen, do we have a David Clark on the line?
Yes. One moment. Line is open.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Mayor Bussie and council members. Good evening. A couple of weeks ago, I called in to provide input on the self-storage issue, but was abruptly cut off by you, Mr. Mayor, during the public hearing. What is the point of a public hearing if you're going to pick and choose what the public speaks on and who speaks? So tonight, I'm going to finish my comment. Would appreciate being given the same opportunity as others to speak on this topic. During that call, I refer to the agenda packet where a 2018 study by colleagues showed that even at that time, three years ago, the Bloomington market for self-storage was becoming saturated, and several units have opened up since then. Bloomington now has nine self-storage units with some 650,000 square feet of storage space, significantly higher than all neighboring cities, with the exception of St. Louis Park. I also pointed out that storage units provide very few good paying jobs and function at all hours of the day and night with people coming and going from different parts of the metro area. The structures by nature are large and monolithic and dwarf any neighboring buildings. We have, de facto, become the self-storage capital of Minnesota. Fortunately, council members Beloga, Coulter, and Carter picked up on this theme, and the conversation ended last time with a potential ban on all future self-storage development for a period of time to let the market absorb the supply. We currently have almost double the national average for supply, according to council member Coulter. But my main point tonight is that self-storage is not an isolated phenomenon occurring in Bloomington. It is instead a symptom of something much larger. It is the result of an increasingly service-based economy that does not pay enough to support a family. This leads more people to only be able to afford high-density housing, which by default has less storage per unit and thus drives the demand for self-storage. In fact, in the packet tonight, on page 152, you show reduced storage space as an incentive for developers, as well as reduced parking space reduction and reduced green space for apartment dwellers. It's all starting to make sense now. This is a three-legged stool we now have in Bloomington and should concern all of us. An increasingly service-based economy, meaning more high-density housing with reduced storage, and then an increasing need for self-storage. This is drastically different vision than most Bloomington residents have for their city, one based on single-family homeownership, good-paying jobs, low crime, rising test scores, and stable tax rates. Instead, we have a push for high-density housing driven by outside forces like the Met Council, as well as increasing crime rates and descending school test scores. All the while, our spending has shot up at a rapid rate in the past five years, and property taxes keep going up to pay for it. So why is that? Now, each one of you on the city council are smart people. There's no doubt about that. But so are we. We're paying more and more attention to what is happening there at City Hall. And we're becoming increasingly troubled by what we're finding. We want a city that works for the residents and has structural mechanisms that ensure the long-term health of the city. The self-storage issue, while important, is simply a symptom of much bigger problems in our town, and these problems are being ignored. Mr. Verbrugge, please answer the following questions next week. How much has city spending gone up in real dollars and percentages in the past five years? How many full-time equivalent positions has the city created in the past five years? How much in dollars have salaries increased? And what percentage increase have these two metrics gone up in the past five years? Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
Zen, do we have a caller by the name of Ted Lockhart on the call?
Thank you. One moment. That name is not yet connected, Chris.
Okay. Could you open it up to anyone else, then, that wishes to provide public comment on item 4.2?
Okay, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And we have a commenter question from Amber Mathwig.
Good evening.
Hello?
Good evening, welcome.
Yes. My name's Amber Mathwig, and I've lived here in Bloomington for the last year. I grew up in Minnesota. And I wanted to just comment on the beautiful, wonderful march of solidarity that the Bloomington High School students had today for racial justice across our Twin Cities and the entire Minnesota area. How just incredible it is to see young people really leading us towards change in our community. I was a little disappointed to see my tax dollars being paid out for eight, nine different police cars with two, possibly three, officers in each for what was a simple march and gathering of the youth to speak their mind. And I would hope that the city would consider not having such strong presence for a peaceful event in the future and hope that you look towards the youth as we continue to challenge the systems that we currently have in place that are harming more of us than they are helping. And that is all I have tonight.
Thank you for your comments. I will say, as I watched the students arrive here at Civic Plaza, the police were there basically to control traffic because the students were walking on both 98th Street and Old Shakopee Road, two busy streets. And they helped to make sure that the students and the large groups could get across the streets safely. So I'm sure Mr. Verbrugge can provide more information next week on that. But I think that's what I was observing.
Yes, the students had already taken care of that with, you know, just their excellent planning and making sure that there were people assigned specifically to do those things.
Yeah, the students don't have the authority to stop traffic at busy intersections, though. So that's why the police were there. Thank you. Thank you for the call. Ms. Wilson.
Zen, do we have any other callers for agenda item 4.2, the general public comment period?
Yes, you have the line of Tom Relit. Line is open.
Good evening. I am glad to be able to speak again. And I'm going to start with this comment. "Come to me, all you who are weary and carrying heavy burdens, and I will give you rest." Those words came out of Jesus and are offered to anyone who is suffering and specifically for LGBTs who are becoming miserable in the lifestyle. Real conversion therapy is forcing them to...
Excuse me? I'm sorry, I missed your name as you came on. I apologize for that. I missed your name. We've got a public hearing coming up very soon on this very topic. And what we're trying to do is leave the public comment period for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Obviously, the conversion therapy proposal is on tonight's agenda. So these would be most appropriate when we get to item 7.1. So if you stick around, there will be time to make these comments.
I get back to work at 6:30.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, we generally, the council rules of procedure say that our public comment period are for items not on tonight's agenda. So you could send an email in. We'd be happy to work that into the public record. It's, I apologize. I'm sorry if you have to get back to work at 6:30.
Zen, do we have other callers for item 4.2, the general public comment period, items not elsewhere on tonight's agenda?
Um, there are no public comments at this time. You may continue.
Could you do one more call for people to press star one?
Sure. Again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And Chris, there's no one.
Okay.
Press star one at this time.
Great.
You may continue.
Thank you.
Very good. With that, we will close item 4.2, our public comment period for this evening, and thank all the callers who did call in. And we'll move on to item five on our agenda. And we've got, those are our introductory items. And we've got actually three different proclamations that we are going to do tonight. And want to get to them? Want to start, the first one is a proclamation for the Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day. And I'm going to read through the proclamation. And then Ms. Frances Snackhour is here to accept the proclamation. So I do want to read this. Actually, April 24th will be our Daughters of the American Revolution Day here in Bloomington. And I will read the proclamation now. "Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day, April 24th, 2021. Whereas the National Society, the Daughters of the American Revolution, also known as the NSDar, was founded in 1890 to preserve the memory and spirit of those who contributed to securing American independence. And whereas NSDar is a nonprofit, non-political women's service organization with more than 185,000 members and approximately 3,000 chapters worldwide, in which any woman 18 years or older, regardless of race, religion, or ethnic background, who can prove lineal descent from a patriot of the American Revolution is eligible for membership. And whereas NSDar has a long history of promoting historic preservation, education, and patriotism. And whereas the study of American history is important to a citizen's understanding of current events in the United States and around the world. And whereas the Minnesota State Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, promotes the study of American history among our young people and will recognize outstanding essays written by students on topics of historical importance at their virtual state conference held on April 24th, 2021, at which members from 21 DAR chapters across Minnesota will attend. Therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 24th, 2021, as Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day here in Bloomington." And as I said, Ms. Frances Snackhour is here to accept this. She's speaking on behalf of the Minnesota chapter to accept the proclamation. And I should say that the Minnesota State Society, they had planned to have their 2020 state conference at the Crown Plaza here in Bloomington, and obviously had to postpone it, cancel it. They can't do it in person. They've replaced their live event with a virtual conference, and we're very glad that they could do that. Good evening, Ms. Snackhour. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm accepting this proclamation on behalf of our state regent, Diane Plunkett-Latham, and the other 1,216 members of the 21 chapters that make up the Minnesota State Society. As a past state regent and as a member of the John Witherspoon Chapter, which is chartered in Bloomington, we appreciate and anticipate the hospitality, the warm welcome that we receive every time we have our state conference in Bloomington. As you said, we were not able to have our 2020 state conference in Bloomington. And again, this year, we were not able to have a state conference in person in Bloomington. But we will be having it virtually on Saturday. And we hope to have the next state conference or the one after that in Bloomington. And we look forward to seeing you, meeting you at that time. Thank you very much for this proclamation.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And thanks for your commitment to history and to keeping the State Society for the Daughters of the American Revolution alive. I think it's a wonderful historical compliment to what we have here in the state of Minnesota. And perhaps you know, and I'm going to catch you off guard here with this a little bit. How many members are there in the Minnesota State Society? How many can actually track lineage to the American Revolution?
We have 1,217 members. And we have a waiting list or an application list of probably 300.
Wonderful. That's fantastic.
Yes, we're very excited to welcome new members.
I bet. Well, again, congratulations. And keep trying. Eventually, we're going to be able to meet in person. I know we will. And whether it's next year or the year after, if you're here back in Bloomington, love to come and meet you in person and congratulate all the members of the society.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you so very much. We can move on to item 5.2, which is another proclamation. And this is for Volunteer Recognition Week, which is April 18th through the 24th. And here in Bloomington, it gives us the opportunity to publicly thank our volunteers and to acknowledge the time and talents and all the service that our volunteers put in and who do great work always in the city, but this past year have been especially so valuable and important as we've worked our way through the pandemic. So Volunteer Recognition Week, April 18th through the 24th in 2021. "Whereas volunteers shape and define the relationships between all sectors of our city with their tremendous concern and generosity. And whereas in the city of Bloomington annually, more than 1,000 volunteers answer the call to make a difference, with each volunteer donating an average of 45 hours per year, providing more than $1 million of in-kind value to the city. And whereas approximately 81 citizens volunteered to serve on the city and the city council on boards and commissions and advisory committees. And whereas during this week across the nation, volunteers will be recognized for their time, talents, and commitment to service in addressing critical needs and meeting the needs of our community, including the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through the 24th, 2021, as Volunteer Recognition Week here in Bloomington." And unfortunately, like so many things, like everything last year, we weren't able to properly recognize our volunteers back in 2020 during the pandemic. So this year, we are including both our 2019 and our 2020 volunteers in this year's acknowledgement. It's kind of a look back. So we're certainly going to recognize everybody. We're celebrating our volunteers this year via our city marquees, our social media platforms, and city communications channels. And on this Saturday, a COVID-19 compliant drive-through event, I believe here at Creekside, I believe, is where it is. So looking forward to seeing everyone on Saturday morning. Thank you. Thank you to the volunteers for your generosity, for your commitment, for your service, for your work here in the city of Bloomington. You know, it really does help the city in so many different ways. And your spirit and your enthusiasm to the city, it's always noticed and it's always greatly appreciated. So thank you so very much to all of our volunteers. And our final proclamation is actually one kind of done retrospectively. We were going to do this last Monday night, but then when we postponed the meeting or continued everything, we moved it forward. And so the week of April 11th through the 17th was the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And the public safety telecommunications, they're also known as the dispatchers. And it was an opportunity to honor the Bloomington Police and Fire Dispatch Center, the professionals who work in the public safety telecommunications roles there. If you call... there. If you call 911, they're the voice on the other end of 911. They help distressed citizens in many different ways, answer questions. And it's also their voice that informs our city police officers and firefighters and give them the whens and the wheres and the how to respond to emergency incidents. So we are greatly appreciative of them. And so as I said, this was last week, but we definitely wanted to make sure that we recognize them. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 11th through the 17th, 2021. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require emergency services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of first responders is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by citizens who telephone the city of Bloomington Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities, providing information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the city of Bloomington have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and care of patients. And whereas in 2020, the city of Bloomington Police Department staffed eight telecommunications who worked as a team to handle 167,262 phone calls and who entered 57,549 computer-aided dispatch events. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, I, Tim Bussie, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through the 17th, 2021, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Bloomington, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. And we talked about this about a month and a half ago, a couple of months ago, as we reviewed the dispatch center in Bloomington. It is a difficult job. It is a challenging job. It's a demanding job, and our dispatchers do an outstanding job. They do very, very high-quality work under oftentimes very stressful situations. So I hope you'll all join me in thanking our dispatchers, congratulating them on the week passed. As I said, they work hard to keep the operation running smoothly. They've got, they're dedicated. They work hard. They can multitask with the best of them. And if you've been in a dispatch center or seen the work that they do, you know full well what I'm talking about. In addition, they have done outstanding job over the past year during the COVID-19 pandemic. They have added screening questions to every call that comes into the 911 center, so there's been an added responsibility there. And yet they continue to do as much as possible to provide our officers and our community with outstanding dispatch center operations. So thank you so very much to our dispatchers. Thank you. It's often an overlooked and underappreciated part of our public safety net in the public sector, but they do great work, and I really want to thank you for your work and for all that you do for the city of Bloomington. So those are the proclamations for this evening, which brings us to item 6 on our agenda, which is our consent business. And Councilmember Coulter has our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Coulter?
I do indeed. Thank you, Mayor. And I made sure to read the one weekly carefully so as to not miss it this time. So I have not, neither I nor the city manager have heard from anyone asking to pull anything from consent. I did want to make one last I am not seeing anyone jump up, in which case, yep, it looks like that we do not have any hold from the consent agenda this evening, so I will move the entirety of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Beloga to approve this evening's consent business, item 6.1 through 6.8. Hearing no further, council discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We can move on now to item 7, which is our hearings and resolutions and ordinances. And as I mentioned earlier, we've got seven public hearings this evening, and I know that many of them are of great public interest, so we do want to get into them. First one I'll call is item 7.1, which is a public hearing on our conversion therapy ordinance. And as we have been talking about for a few weeks here, the city council is considering an ordinance to prohibit the practice of conversion therapy on minors and vulnerable adults within the city limits and establishing enforcement and penalties for violations. So I believe that Melissa Wurst Prasad is going to lead us off on this and then turn it over to a couple of members of our Human Rights Commission, and we'll then have, answer any questions, and then open up the public hearing. Ms. Wurst Prasad, are you taking this for us?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Melissa Wurst Prasad, and I am the staff liaison for the Human Rights Commission. And as the commission is returning this evening with a final draft conversion therapy ordinance for your review and consideration, Chairperson Molly Bosu and Commissioner Anita Smithson will provide a short overview of the Human Rights Commission's recommendation, followed by Deputy City Attorney Peter Zuniga, who will then walk through the ordinance. So with that, I will now turn the presentation over to Chair Bosu.
Good evening, Chair Bosu. Welcome back. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for having us here again tonight and for considering this ordinance. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. We can hear you, and the presentation is up. You're ready to go.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so we can go on next. Thank you. So to remind you and to give some context to our public who's here tonight on how we got to tonight, I'm going to talk through a timeline of the Human Rights Commission's involvement in the conversion therapy ban. So in early 2020, we received a request from Councilmember Coulter to research the topic of a conversion therapy. We began that research in April of 2020. Our research involved several discussions at commission meetings, a presentation and testimony from Outfront Minnesota, inquiries with other individuals and groups, including Bloomington Public Schools, Senator Scott Dibble's office, the State Department of Human Rights, and other Minnesota municipalities. We also collected data and literature from a number of sources, such as the Minnesota Student Survey, the Human Rights Campaign, the Trevor Project, medical organizations, as well as others. Slide? All right. So we first came before you on January 25th of this year to introduce our findings and to seek direction from city council. Then we came back on March 1st and brought back our recommendation, including a draft ordinance of the conversion therapy ban. We also brought back questions, or charted responses to questions that had been asked to us at that January 25th meeting. And during that meeting, we also included community feedback, both for and in opposition to the ordinance. And then tonight, April 19th, the final draft ordinance will be presented, and there will be a public hearing held. And so in our research, we compiled a list of many organizations that have statements denouncing conversion therapy. You can see the many organizations listed here. To highlight a couple of examples, you'll see the American Medical Association, the American Psychiatric Association, and the United Nations High Commissioner of Human Rights. I do, with this list, I do want to make a note of a new addition to this list. So on April 12th, so just a week ago today, the National Association of Social Workers, Minnesota, banned conversion therapy for all social workers in Minnesota, and explicitly stated in their announcement that is unethical practice, that should be reported and disciplined as such. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Smithson, and she'll share a little bit more about our recommendation.
Good evening, Commissioner Smithson. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So after this almost year-long of research that we have done, really, it's overwhelming. The evidence is there that shows that conversion therapy is a harmful practice. Members of the LGBTQIA community are already at a significant risk of depression, anxiety, substance abuse, suicide, and homelessness, and these risks increase significantly when conversion therapy is involved. Even just looking at Bloomington specifically, the annual, or I think biannual, student survey just shows that lesbian, gay, bisexual, and questioning students in the Bloomington Public School District have significantly increased risk of suicide when compared to their heterosexual peers. Our research really showed that it's important for cities and states to take action to protect LGBTQIA youth and vulnerable adults from the harms caused by conversion therapy. Next slide. So just to recap what our recommendation is, the Human Rights Commission recommends the city council adopts an ordinance to ban conversion therapy performed by licensed providers on minors and vulnerable adults. So a couple of things with that. This obviously wouldn't preclude adults 18-plus from seeking this type of service, and it doesn't prevent LGBTQIA people from seeking mental health services in general. It only prohibits a certain type of practice that is known to cause harm. And there is that First Amendment clergy-religious leader exemption that I know you've heard a lot about in comment from the public. And our recommendation at the commission level is that the penalty be a civil citation. There's a lot of reasons for this. It's demonstrated to be effective in other cities and states that have bans, and it doesn't bring increased trauma for survivors or victims of conversion therapy, because it wouldn't require them to go through, you know, lengthy statements and testimony against their therapist during a criminal proceeding like a courtroom. And it allows for the anonymity of survivors, as a report could be made by a counselor, a social worker, or a friend, or others, which is similar to how reports can be made for child and adult protective services. Next slide. So we know that protecting LGBTQIA people is a community priority here in Bloomington. Our role as the Human Rights Commission is to aid and advise the city council on matters of human rights. It should be noted that we're not professional researchers, but I know that everyone on our commission takes the responsibility to serve our community on this commission incredibly serious, and we are all really honored to do this work. And, you know, we approach this knowing that we have the potential to make a difference in the lives of LGBTQIA people in our community. This ordinance does support the city council's strategic priority of equity and inclusion as well. So next slide, I'm now going to turn over the rest of this, of the presentation tonight, to the Deputy City Attorney, Peter Zuniga, who will walk you through the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Zuniga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Going to share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also joined today by Wendy Murphy, our Deputy City Attorney for Prosecution. I'll be walking through the ordinance with you, and when we get to our discussion on enforcement and penalties, Ms. Murphy will talk you about the criminal process and answer any questions that you may have about the criminal process. First, I'd like to start off with the city council's authority to enact an ordinance prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy. We'll start with the city's charter, which has what we call an all-powers clause, which says that the city has all powers now or in the future authorized for a city, and that the city charter should be construed liberally to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the city. In other contexts, such as earned, safe, and sick leave ordinances, or a city's ability to regulate building within their jurisdiction, courts have said that cities have all the legislative power as a state unless the state preempts the city. And in this particular case, the state has not adopted a conversion therapy ban, and therefore, the city has not preempted from doing this. Courts have also said that among these broad powers is a power to enact ordinances that protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. And so that's what this ordinance Section 1 of the ordinance contains the city council's findings and purpose, severability, definitions, and prohibited conduct. I'll talk about the enforcement and penalty options a little bit later, which are contained in other sections of the ordinance. First, the findings. That's the reasons the council is regulating the practice or conduct of conversion therapy within Bloomington. You've heard from multiple occasions from the Human Rights Commission, the need for this ordinance. You've heard it again tonight from the Human Rights Commission about the harm that this therapy does pose to minors and vulnerable adults. And so the purpose of this ordinance is to protect the physical and psychological well-being of minors and vulnerable adults from the exposures and serious harms caused by conversion Severability, you know, this just simply says that if a court rules that any part of the ordinance is invalid or unconstitutional, the remaining parts still remain in effect. You'll notice that we moved this section up from previous drafts of the ordinance, and this was simply for the ease of drafting, as we provided multiple enforcement and penalty options for your consideration. Next, the ordinance includes the definitions for the terms used in the ordinance. These are important because it defines who this ordinance is designed to protect. First, it defines minor, which is any person under the age of 18, and then it defines vulnerable adult, which is any person who is 18 or older and who meets the definition of vulnerable adult in Minnesota statutes. Next ordinance defines conversion therapy. And so without reading the entire definition, it is essentially any practice or conduct by a provider that seeks to change an individual's sexual orientation or gender identity, including efforts to change behaviors or gender expressions, or to eliminate or reduce sexual or romantic attractions or feelings toward the same gender. Equally important is that it also defines what it's not. A definition does not include mental health services related to trauma, sexual abuse, or sexual orientation or gender identity, as long as the services do not seek to change a person's sexual orientation or gender. Next, the ordinance defines who is a provider. Any individual who is licensed, certified, or registered by the state of Minnesota, including mental health practitioners, mental health professionals, that provide mental health services. These include, but are not limited to physicians, psychiatrists, psychologists, marriage and family therapists, social workers, clinical counselors, behavioral clinicians, or therapists, Next, the ordinance also defines who this ordinance does not apply to, which is clergy or religious officials. As I've previously mentioned, this definition is very similar to what currently exists in Minnesota state law, and it determines who does not need a license to practice psychology within the state. And so under this definition, clergy or religious officials includes ministers, priests, rabbis, imams, Christian Science practitioners, and other officials that conduct counseling activities that are within the scope of their religious domination or sect. And if the official does not hold themselves out as a provider, then the official remains accountable to the established authority of the religious domination or sect. Finally, the ordinance determines what conduct is prohibited. The ordinance makes it unlawful for a provider to conduct or practice conversion therapy on a minor or vulnerable adult within the city limits. This does not apply to members of the clergy or religious officials. It does not prohibit the practice of conversion therapy on individuals over 18 and who are able to make decisions regarding their own medical or mental health. And then what is new from previous drafts of the ordinance is that it does not prohibit the practice of conversion therapy on minors who are able to give effective consent to medical mental health services pursuant to current Minnesota state law. So under current Minnesota law, minors are able to give effective medical, effective consent to receive medical or mental health services in certain circumstances, such as if a minor was not living... such as if a minor was not living with their parents and are managing their personal finances, a minor can consent to medical treatment under state law. And so therefore, we created this this exception to the prohibition. Sections two and three of the ordinance. Section two is the effective date in the ordinance and the staff recommends effective date of January third, twenty twenty-two. And this is really to allow staff time to develop reporting mechanisms, educational informational resources, our investigation procedures, and establish coordination with both internal and external government agencies. And then as we get into our discussion on enforcement and penalties, section three makes it clear that if you adopt sections one and two of this ordinance, only one option that staff has provided to you for enforcement and penalties should be adopted. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, and before I move on to the enforcement and penalty options, I'll stop to see if there are any questions from council at this point.
Thank you. Council, any questions on the the meat of the ordinance? I do not see any hands up at this time. Mr. Zuniga, if you'd like to continue, please.
Great. So I'll proceed to the enforcement and penalties. So we've provided three options for the council's consideration. Option A is makes a violation of the ordinance an administrative offense with civil fine penalties. Option B is for a first offense, it's an administrative offense with civil fine penalties. And then a second violation would be a criminal offense and criminal penalty. And then option C is a criminal only offense and penalty. Before we get into the different options, you know, we thought it would be helpful for a council to understand the difference between administrative enforcement and hearing process versus a criminal process. So under the administrative process, we only have to have reasonable belief that an administrative offense has occurred. If we believe that an offense has occurred, you know, under the current options, the city attorney's office would send a warning letter to the provider indicating that city ordinance prohibits the practice of conversion therapy and ask for their immediate compliance with it. Under our current city city code, we can then issue in order to correct the violation. And then if not corrected, then we proceed to administrative citation and fine. Under the current code, the the provider would have the ability to request administrative conference with the city attorney's office within twenty-five days of receiving the citation. And there it's an informal discussion between the the provider and the city attorney's office to help resolve the the issue or the allegation. If at that point we're unable to resolve the citation, the provider would have the ability to request administrative hearing either before an independent hearing officer or administrative law judge. And then at any point, either party may request mediation. If the if it does go to the administrative hearing officer, the standard that they would use is the preponderance of the evidence, which is is a low standard of evidence, which essentially says that it just has to be greater than fifty percent that the the provider did engage in and prohibited conduct. At the hearing procedure, there's no strict rules of evidence. Each party may provide documents or witness testimony. And then each party may rely on hearsay evidence. After the administrative hearing officer issues their opinion, the provider would then have the ability to appeal directly to the Minnesota Court of Appeals under writ of certiorari. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Wendy Murphy to discuss the the criminal process.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Murphy, the deputy city attorney for the criminal division. And good evening. And council members. I'm just going to give a little perspective on the criminal process so people will have an understanding of what will happen if there is a criminal penalty on this. On the criminal process, we are going to have to start with a criminal investigation that will be completed by law enforcement. And at that point, anybody who would have been subject to conversion band therapy, whether that be a minor or a vulnerable adult, excuse me, will have to make a statement to law enforcement. And if someone else has reported the conversion therapy, it could be quite surprising for the minor or vulnerable adult to have interaction with the police at this point. The police officer, the detective will have to ask questions related to what happened during the therapy, what led up to the therapy, how that person is feeling after the therapy. And once that criminal investigation is completed, it will be sent to the city attorney's office for possible charging. But once an investigation starts, the suspect is already able to invoke their constitutional rights, their constitutional protections, which would mean a right to remain silent, not answering any questions by law enforcement, a right to counsel. And those would all take place before the charging decision. The charging decision, once it came to our office, we would base a charging decision on probable cause. That is all that we need to do in the state of Minnesota. That is not a very high standard. But as prosecutors, we also know that typically a case does not get any better than when it is first presented to us. It is not uncommon for people to decide to not cooperate afterwards, after the initial investigation. So oftentimes, we're looking at what sort of admissible evidence do we have at this point? And that's where we kind of start more of a deviation from the civil side. Assuming that we charge the decision and a provider now becomes a defendant, the defendant has a right to counsel. The defendant will be at several scheduled hearings in the court. Most important, what happens once we charge somebody is all the material that we have collected in our investigation is turned over to the defense. That means the defense attorney and the defendant, who is the provider, will have access to everything that the law enforcement investigation found or revealed. That will include any statements made by the minor or vulnerable adult, any recordings. And we cannot withhold that from the defense. There are limited circumstances where we may be able to keep the minor or the vulnerable adult's identity sealed with the court up until a trial. And then at that point, that person has to become, their identity has to become known because they will have to testify. There's also a part of the discovery process which is not unheard of where a defense attorney can request any sort of medical or mental health records for any witness that is going to be testifying in the case. And it would be conceivable in these types of cases when we're talking about practitioners, mental health providers, or if parents are involved in sending this minor to the conversion therapist, there may be information that is disclosed to the defense attorney about a minor or vulnerable adult's mental health issues. And because if you get to the trial stage, one of the hardest things that a minor or vulnerable adult is going to go through is cross examination. There is no way that we can prove a case at trial beyond a reasonable doubt, excuse me, beyond a reasonable doubt without having the person who was subjected to the conversion therapy to come and testify. At trial, we have to prove all the elements of the offense, all the elements of the ordinance beyond a reasonable doubt. We cannot use hearsay. There are there are very limited circumstances in the state of Minnesota where a minor can testify in open court without actually having to be in the court across from the defendant and give their testimony. The additional thing that I wanted to make sure that people understood as well is that the courtroom is open to the public. So it's very possible that not only will this minor or vulnerable adult testify in an open courtroom in front of the defendant, but family members could come, strangers could come. And keep in mind that this minor or vulnerable adult will have to testify if there is a jury trial to at least seven jurors. And go through everything that brought them to the point where they were subjected to the conversion therapy. So it is not a system that allows for testimony by paper, testimony by dispositions or testimony by, say, a teacher or a social worker coming in and testifying as to what happened. And final thing is, the criminal court process is a very long process. We are seeing cases right now, partly because of the pandemic, but we're seeing cases that occurred last week in the city of Bloomington getting that first hearing, which would be the arraignment, scheduled in November. And we are starting jury trials in September that are over a year old. So this is not a quick process for the minor or the vulnerable adult. There is a lot of constant reminder of this is coming up and there's nothing that that minor or vulnerable adult can do to speed up that process. That's all I had, and I'm certainly available afterwards for questions on the criminal process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Appreciate it. Mr. Zuniga, are we headed back to you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So continuing on with the enforcement and penalty options, I want to talk a little bit about the provisions that are common within three, all three options so that I don't have to discuss the same provisions three separate times. First, each session of conversion therapy with a minor or vulnerable adult will be considered a separate violation under the proposed ordinances. Two, the city attorney will report a violation to the appropriate licensing board. And then three, nothing within the ordinance would preclude any other available legal remedies for a violation of a law, both criminal or civil options. So getting into the options. First, we have proposed option A for your consideration, which is an administrative offense. This would be sections four and five of the ordinance. It starts off with a a warning letter like I previously mentioned. And then a violation is administrative offense and it's enforced through the administrative enforcement and hearing process currently in city code. A first offense would be a civil penalty in the amount of five hundred dollars. And then a second offense would be a thousand dollars. Enforcement and penalty option B, which is more of a hybrid approach, which would be an administrative offense than a criminal offense, are section six and seven of the ordinance. So again, here we start off with a warning letter to the provider. And then a first violation of the ordinance would be an administrative offense enforced through the the administrative enforcement hearing process. And then a civil fine would be five hundred dollars. A second violation of of this option would be a criminal offense, which would be a misdemeanor and a fine up to a thousand dollars or up to ninety days in jail or both. And then finally, the third option for your consideration is option C, which is a criminal offense. This would be sections eight and nine of the ordinance. And it makes a violation of the ordinance misdemeanor with a criminal penalty up to a thousand dollars to ninety days in jail or both. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Murphy and I will stand for any questions related to the enforcement and penalty options.
Council questions. Council member Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a question related to the last exemption that you had talked about. And I don't believe that I see saw that when I was reviewing the or the the council packet. I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit more about where that came from, the rationale behind that. Do you know what I'm referring to?
It would be the the third bullet point on this slide.
Yes, yep. Yeah. So that I think is new and hasn't been part of past conversations with the council. And so I'm just curious to have more information on that piece.
Mr. Mayor, council member Carter, that is correct. This provision is new in this draft of the ordinance. It was not contained in previous drafts. You know, we have been continually doing research on this issue. And during our research, we found current state law, which is founded in chapter one forty-four of state statute, where under this provision of state law, minors can give effective consent to receive medical and mental health services. Such circumstances are, you know, most commonly thought of as maybe like an emancipated minor, where a minor is not living with their parents, where they're financially independent, they're managing their personal affairs. Other circumstances are where the minor has either gotten married or given birth to a child. In those circumstances, a minor can consent to receive medical and mental health services as well as in certain circumstances for drug or alcohol abuse or emergency scenarios. So this this exception to their prohibition, I think, really is consistent with with state law.
Thank you for explaining that. I don't have any other questions at this time.
Council member Lowman.
Yeah, I wanted to look at that section A under the penalty piece. I just had a question. When we get to under option A, you got offense one, offense two. What happens when you get to offense three?
Mr. Zuniga.
Mr. Mayor, council member Lowman. You know, I think at that point, we would go back to to stage one, which would be a start over again. Under our current city code, we do not have the ability to fine anyone more than two thousand dollars. So we would be limited by that that section of city code and what we could do for future violations beyond a second offense.
So so help me understand what that means. So that's two thousand dollars total to one entity? Or is that two thousand dollars per time?
Mr. Mayor, council member Lowman, that would be probably to one entity, not at a one session or instance of of violation.
So is there a reason why we picked the five hundred, no, one thousand? Is that so if there was a third offense, that that's how we'd handle it?
Mr. Mayor, council member Lowman. You know, I wouldn't say that, you know, that's why we picked it in how we dealt with a third offense. Certainly, I think those those amounts, you could certainly adjust. But also keeping in mind that there is provision of the city code that limits our ability to two thousand dollars.
And that's lifetime, right?
That is correct.
So once that two thousand has been exhausted, what happens at that point? You had mentioned something about nothing precludes legal action above and beyond what's written here. Help me understand how that works and operates.
Right, Mr. Mayor, council member Lowman, there is no, you know, we did include that section that would not preclude us from pursuing other legal avenues. And so if we believe that there's a continued violation, we may have the ability to go, you know, s- seek a restraining order. If we believe that there are criminal laws that have been violated, we would have the ability to conduct a criminal investigation and potentially criminal prosecution as well.
So let's go to option B. Just a couple of quick questions there. Actually, maybe I'll do it this way. It might be a little easier to kind of do it this way. I'll just let me ask the question this way too. It's Wendy, right?
Yes.
Wendy, so help me understand how counties handle, you know, other types of sexual crime type things. So we have a is that go to the courtroom as well? Help me understand how that that operates. We've got, you know, like a torture situation going on.
Sure. Yes, on criminal sexual conduct cases, kidnapping cases, severe assault cases, even when the victims are kiddos. victims are kiddos, the default is they will testify, and that is why you have a lot of instances where victims do not want to cooperate. I've had, in my experience, I've had a judge who was unpersuaded under state law that the kiddo that was my victim in a criminal sexual conduct case, who was under the age of seven, would be traumatized by testifying about sexual assault, and that child was forced to testify in an open courtroom. The defendant was a family member, and that was something that we litigated long about, and the judge was not persuaded. So even adult cases where you have severe assaults, domestic violence cases, again, criminal sexual conduct cases, there is no real protection for that victim to be subject to cross-examination in an open courtroom in front of the perpetrator or alleged perpetrator. At most, they can have a support person be in the courtroom with them. With children, the support person can sit next to them while they testify, but that is one of the ways and one of the reasons why many of the person crimes that deal with those types of offenses are not successfully prosecuted. And you'll see a lot of those cases that get some sort of resolution plea bargain before a trial starts. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, it gets closer to where I'm going with it, just trying to understand how that process works. What I'll do is I'll take a step back here, and we can answer some more other questions. I've got some more questions, but I'm gonna hold back here.
Council, additional questions? I'll agree with you, Councilmember Lohman. I was surprised to hear the total fine to an individual is $2,000. I was surprised to see that and surprised to hear that, because it could apply beyond this. I mean, if somebody has a junk pile in their backyard and just leaves it there, if it costs them $2,000, and then they just leave it forever, I mean, it seems like there might not be enough teeth in that, in that part of the city code, but that's a discussion for another day. We can talk about that later. I understand that. Council, additional questions? Councilmember Lohman, if you've got additional questions, you can jump right back in, otherwise we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing here.
Well, you know, Mayor, if I can ask questions after the public goes on ahead and asks, I don't want to stop the public. I've got questions here, but maybe some of those questions will be answered through the public hearing. I just want to make sure I'm formatting them, too, and part of it goes to what you just mentioned, Mayor, there, that $2,000 fine. And I know that that's not what we're talking about here, so I'm gonna censor myself on that, but that's real troubling to me, that amount, so let's go forward.
Agreed. I see Councilmember Coulter with his hand up. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, just a few quick questions. First of all, I, at this point, I've lost track of who's running the slideshow, but if whoever is running the slideshow could just go back, it was during Ms. Bousu's portion of the presentation to that list of organizations. I know that was kind of a ways back.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. Let me just get access to share, and I'll pull that one up. Just give me one moment here.
Looks like it's slide number four there. Okay, thank you. I just, I missed something, and I just wanted to make sure I read that correctly. And then I, just a couple of other quick questions, and I'm not sure if these would be answered by legal or other folks, but can you remind me again which cities in Minnesota have adopted prohibitions on conversion therapy?
Ms. Wirsprasad or Ms. Smithson or Bousu?
Sure, I can start, and then Commissioner Smithson or Bousu, if you want to add. So we have Minneapolis, St. Paul, Duluth, Red Wing, Robbinsdale. Golden Valley has a proclamation, and I'm thinking, uh...
Winona and Red Wing?
I knew it started with a W. I was gonna say Waconia.
And then, just to clarify, maybe from the legal side of things, as far as we're aware, none of those cities have seen any legal action on their ordinances. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, yeah, to the best of our knowledge, there is no legal action regarding the other cities' ordinances.
Okay, thank you. And then just the last question here, and I think it gets a little bit of what Councilmember Lohman was asking about, too. I believe it was Ms. Smithson mentioned that civil fines have been effective with other prohibitions. I'm wondering if we could just get a little more information on that, expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, you know, I would defer to Ms. Smithson on that one, since she made the statement.
Commissioner Smithson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Coulter. So in our research and in talking, you know, with advocacy organizations, that was what was expressed to us in Minnesota, the, you know, as we've talked, you know, about the prevalence quite a few times, you know, there's not a whole lot of people who have come forward in Minnesota to say that this has happened to them, and then to use those civil, you know, process to, you know, administer fines, but that is what generally has been effective in other communities to deter it. So, you know, because in Minnesota, some of these communities that enacted these bans don't have evidence that it was occurring in their community, but they wanted to take a step to ban it before it got established. That's some of that, and, you know, Duluth has the most accessible portal with regards to reporting, and I think has done, you know, this is my opinion here, but in the state of Minnesota, Duluth has done the best job with communicating that they have an ordinance in place and making it really easy for people to report, but that was just stood up early 2021, so I'm not sure if they have seen any reports through that process yet. But in, you know, other municipalities across the United States that do have this, that civil process has been the most effective.
Okay, so it's based on the, essentially, the experience of other governments that have enacted this kind of prohibition, then?
Yes, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Council, any additional questions?
There, just one real quick one.
Councilmember Lohman.
I'm gonna hold off my other ones. Just correction, I was not necessarily looking at the effectiveness of what fines do, just for Councilmember Coulter, but my question is around public health. I was wondering, just so the general public would know, if this was taken before the Public Health Commission, and what the results were from that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. Are you asking, just to clarify, if it went before the Advisory Board of Health?
Yeah.
The cities? It did not, but they did send a letter of support, which I believe was included in the March 1st packet.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that folks understand that letter of support, and also whether or not it went past that advisory board or not. Is there a reason why it didn't go before the board, just because it was housed in the human rights? Just trying to understand from a process standpoint, so the public understands how that this all works.
So because it was brought forward by the Human Rights Commission, and they were asked to do the research, that was why it stayed with the Human Rights Commission, but then the Advisory Board of Health, knowing that this is a health issue, particularly male health issue, and protecting LGBT youth and vulnerable adults, that the Advisory Board of Health was asked to consider a letter of support and was provided the background information that the commission had done, similar to other organizations that had sent letters of support. I know, I think in this packet, there's one from Illina Health.
Any other questions, Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification on all of that. Just wanted to make sure that the general public understands our process and where the support is from all of our boards. Thank you.
Seeing no further council questions, I am gonna open our public hearing on item 7.1, which is the conversion therapy ordinance. I know we have a number of folks who have called in, a number of folks lined up who would like to speak on this. What we're gonna do here, based on our rules of procedure, each caller will be limited to five minutes, and I'll be keeping track of the time, and we'll cut you off at that five-minute mark. I do ask you to keep your comments germane to the proposed ordinance itself. There's a lot around this, but what we're doing right now is to have our, the discussion is to be about this ordinance that we're considering here tonight, and we'll give everybody a bite at the apple here. We'll take everybody's calls, and then we'll close the public hearing, and we'll get into council discussion on this. All right. Ms. Wilson, if you could help us out, get us kicked off here, please.
Zen, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Zen, do we have Natalie Marose on the line?
Yes, line is open.
Welcome back, Ms. Marose, and I'm also, I would like to say to all speakers, as you come on, if you could state your first and last names very clearly, just so we make sure we have them officially for the record. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. My name again is Natalie Marose. I want nothing more than what's best for children, and I choose to believe that those bringing forth this ordinance want the same thing. But this ban is not what's best. This ordinance most certainly does not support the council's goal of equity and inclusion. It takes helpful, real, caring options away from people, including children, who are hurting, often as a result of sexual abuse in their life. Please, please pay attention to those who have told you how what you refer to as conversion therapy has saved their lives. They have told you, because of the help you're talking about banning, they are no longer depressed, no longer suicidal. Therapy is a personal, private, individual decision. Individuals, parents, and professionals deserve the right to make those decisions for themselves, not our city council. Please do not approve this dangerous conversion therapy ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another caller? Who's next, please?
Zen, could you please put through Lyle Dokendorf? Zen, can you hear me?
What? Say. I'm sorry, say it again. Oh, you have somebody else.
No, I believe, is this Mr. Dokendorf?
Yes, it is.
You are on, and you are ready to go. Please, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta mute my thing here. My name is Lyle Dokendorf, and I'm rather disappointed that the council was even considering this ban on conversion therapy. I understand that the teen years of our children are really filled with anxiety and confusion regarding the sexuality. Sometimes talk therapy is extremely useful to help an individual sort out those multiple feelings. You know, they arise from hormones, peer pressure, and what I would call the noisy, falsely-informed mainstream media. Contrary to reports from some experts, so-called, that say conversion therapy is ineffectual, I'm aware of situations when it has been successful in helping those minors. By banning conversion therapy, you're taking away the rights of parents to choose what they might, what they think might be right for their children. This may include religious convictions. I see this as just one more attempt by government to usurp the role of parents in bringing up their children and sanctioning their own anti-religious biases. In either case, I believe you have no legitimate moral or legal right to initiate a ban. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dokendorf.
Zen, do we have Darren Meehl on the line? M-E-H-L?
One moment.
All right, thank you for waiting. Darren Meehl's line is open.
Thank you. My name is Darren Meehl, president of Voice of the Voiceless, and my organization represents the voices and lives of those who have left the identity and lifestyle of LGBTQ to follow Jesus Christ. As your ban states, these are beliefs of your identity and your gender, and those are very personal. They are not a state of being, like your skin color, height, age, or weight, but they're subjective beliefs about oneself tied to rigid stereotypes for gender or sexual desires and same-sex attraction for sexual orientation. Both our desires and our beliefs about ourselves can change, and in your ordinance, you've stated that you found that it's not a shortcoming that requires cure or correction. However, there is a moral aspect to the behaviors related to sodomy and cross-dressing. And in faith, in specific faith, people do choose to align their behaviors and their identities to their faith, and this ordinance would take a serious and alienable right and deny it to those children. It would separate the parents' rights to help raise their child when they're confused in the faith of the child as well, and it would, amazingly, you added the emancipation exception, which would actually give emancipated children more rights than children that are living with their parents and under their authority. I'm also concerned that the, one of the advocacy groups that was used in the research has said that these conversion therapy bans are a proxy attack on the church because they can't go after ministries and pastors that are teaching this. And so that was in 2014 at Google headquarters, that that was stated, and they made it very clear that while there may be exceptions for religious, this is a cultural proxy attack against our religious beliefs. And then also in your conversion therapy, you've defined it that it will not include any mental health services that provide assistance to an individual, which would be a minor, undergoing gender transition, which I would say gender transition is impossible to do. We are born male and female, and you cannot transition to the other one. We do have rigid stereotypes, perhaps, of what presenting as a male or female may happen, but there is no transition. And if a child is confused and a parent wants to bring them in to help them live in the sex that they were born as, that would be prohibited. So one could say that this is a must-go-gay or must-go-transgender ordinance. And my final point, I'll say the very tragic story of a seven-year-old that the city attorney mentioned, a seven-year-old being sexually assaulted by a family member. I do have several individuals in my organization who were sexually assaulted from the age of seven, seven until 15, and they actually needed therapy because they had same-sex attraction, trauma-induced same-sex attraction that they felt was not part of who they were. And therapy actually helped them with the anxiety and the depression to recognize that it was trauma, and then they're married today and have children, several of them. And so conversion therapy has been an ideological drop bucket for everything and anything that may allow anybody to have a goal of their own to leave the LGBT identity behind, and that's all that I have to say. God bless.
Thank you for your comments.
Zen, do we have Victor Rivas on the line?
One moment. Line is open.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Good evening. Good, excuse me, could I ask you to speak up? I'm having a hard time hearing you here. If you could speak up, that'd be great.
Okay, sure. Is that better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Is that any better? Can you, sure, thank you. It is the first time that I do call on regards to the conversion therapy. I tried to prepare a speech that would last only a few minutes, however, because of work, I couldn't do that, but I do, will make this quick. I do believe that it is an overreach of the city council part or the city government. It's also unconstitutional to have this ordinance. It's also unconstitutional to have this ordinance applied to the city. I believe strongly that it's the parents' decision to decide whether a minor needs a conversion therapy or not. It's not for the city government to interfere with the family or the parents' authority to decide what is best for a child or a minor when it comes to not only conversion therapy. I believe that this is just the beginning for a broader application of this ordinance in the future. Again, it's a total overreach on part of the city to try to have an ordinance that prohibits parents and practitioners from practicing conversion therapy, which in many occasions, I am aware, has been successful. I have friends, like the previous gentleman spoke, that have been benefited by this therapy over the years. With that said, I don't have anything more to add, but I do appreciate the fact that you allowed me to opine on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
Zen, for our next caller, could you patch through Kathleen Niediger? Niediger?
One moment.
Good evening, welcome. Kathleen, are you there?
Your line is open.
Kathleen, are you there? Maybe we can move on, we'll double back and see if she has disconnected in some way.
Zen, could we have the line of David Clark, please?
One moment. David's line is open.
Good evening, Mayor Bussie and councilmembers. My name is David Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, here we are. We're finally having the public hearing on the proposed conversion therapy ban, and the residents are getting to weigh in on the proposal. In your package tonight, there are almost twice as many letters opposed to the ban as in favor of it, and so far, no one's called in in favor of it. You fielded dozens of calls from concerned residents about overreach, First Amendment concerns, parents' rights, religious liberty concerns, and the city's financial exposure to lawsuits. You've had multiple residents point out the unfair process that brought us to this point, and you've had several opportunities to table this whole thing, given the outcry over the infringement on our liberties. And yet, here we are. What we're really seeing is not a discussion about conversion therapy, but the corruption that exists at City Hall. And here's how it works. Extreme groups like Outfront Minnesota fund your campaigns for election and even run your campaigns, to which you are then beholden once you get into office. Then you cherry pick activists for the Human Rights Commission, some reportedly from the same Outfront Minnesota, who then just happened to take up a controversial issue in the middle of a pandemic, after the city council declares on March 16th of last year, no nonessential business will be conducted until further notice. We're still under that emergency order, by the way. Then the Human Rights Commission conducts a one-sided, biased study of this non-issue over the last year, where none of their meetings were recorded despite being conducted on WebEx, and then presents a report to the city council on January 25th of this year, making no effort to present the other side or even pretend to. If anything, this whole exercise is not proven in need for a conversion therapy ban, but instead has exposed this closed system of corruption that exists from the funding of your campaigns to the stacking of the commissions and then using the taxpayer-funded commissions to do your bidding on the issues you owe your funders. It's a closed loop of corruption. So, go ahead, take the vote tonight. You've already made up your minds, and you won't listen to the residents, but one thing is clear, this will mark a new low point for this city council and the mayor on how you conduct business and how systemically corrupt our institutions are in this city. It's bad enough when it exists in Washington and St. Paul, but here it is, right in our own backyard. The people really do get the government they put up with. So, you have one last chance tonight to redeem yourselves, and that is with a no vote on this ordinance. That is the right thing to do. Listen to the majority of the residents. Listen to the Constitution. Vote no. Thank you. That's all I got.
Ms. Wilson.
Zen, the next caller on our list is Angela Coyle.
One moment. Her line is open.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bussie and councilmembers. My name is Angela Coyle. On March 20, or, excuse me, on March 16th of 2020, you declared an emergency in the city of Bloomington and promised that only essential business would be conducted, which turned out to be a lie. If anything, you began to push nonessential business more and more, such as directing the Human Rights Commission to quote-unquote "research" the issue of conversion therapy in our city. A completely one-sided study was conducted by the commission with no effort at all to be unbiased, and that was presented to you on January 25th of this year. A follow-up presentation was made on March 1st to the city council, but it was clear that it was, that the fix was in. The city council appointed activists to the Human Rights Commission, who in turn conducted a completely one-sided study of the nonexistent issue of conversion therapy in Bloomington. I work in the medical field, and if a patient came to me to discuss conversion therapy, I would defer them to their medical doctor, and that is where this belongs, between a patient and a medically trained physician. Not a single one of you have MD behind your names. In my line of work, I regularly read and discuss scientific, medically-based studies. The studies previously mentioned here are not scientific-based studies. They are at best opinion-based papers. These studies rely on self-reports. Furthermore, the researchers are not actually assessing change in sexual orientation or arousal patterns but in behavior, which is not a true gauge or orientation. Since these are opinion-based studies, I'll give you my opinion. You should not be making this decision. This needs to stay in the medical field. This is well above your pay grade. This does not belong on your plates to decide. Conversion therapy is not something you, as a council, should be part of. You are using taxpayer-funded commission as a cover for your radical agenda, and here we are today. It is clear for the world to see this is a sham of a process, all the while pretending to be transparent and fair to the public, while all of you decide months ago you are going to vote. So, the commission pretends to be unbiased, the council pretends to be deliberate in a fair manner, and we have to pretend to be listened to. But we aren't pretending anymore. We see exactly what you are doing, and if you pass this ordinance tonight, we will hold you accountable. Do not think for a moment that we are going to forget about this. You have an opportunity to vote no, and that's what you should be doing. Listen to the majority of the residents in Bloomington and vote no on this ordinance. Remember, you serve the entire city, not just the LGBTQ residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
Zen, could we have Rod Wilson, please?
One moment. The line is open.
Okay, terrific. Good evening, good evening all.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ah, gosh, you know, a lot of, lot of good things being said by a lot of, lot of great residents of Bloomington here tonight. And as I sat and waited for my turn and listened to what was all going on tonight, I was absolutely shocked at, at just the craziness of all this. It's, it's just absolutely insane. Don't we have better things to do with our time and our money here in the city of Bloomington? We have far more other things that need addressing. But focusing on conversion therapy, my, my first main thought is that what if, any of you veteran in the council and such, just a what-if scenario, you have, you have a child, and I don't know who has children and who doesn't, and that, that's irrelevant, but just put yourself in that place. And, and your child goes off to school, and all this indoctrination that takes place in the schools nowadays, and there's no way to deny that it doesn't take place. People can, you can, you can, if you want to be a tree, you can be a tree. If you want to be a football, you can be a football. Just, I mean, these are far-fetched, but some people, they want to be a football, and they choose to be that. So, your child comes home from school, and they say, "Gosh, this is what I want to, this is what I want to do." But little Bobby's only seven years old. Little Bobby really doesn't have a lot of clear thinking upon lots of things in life because he has no experience in life. He has no wisdom. He has no knowledge. We, as adults, do have those things, and especially when it's our child, we would have great concerns about their well-being. When they come up to the stove and the, and the, and the electric stove is, the burner is hot, you, you see them going for the stove, you pull their arm away so that their, their hand doesn't get burned. And so, I mean, these, these are analogies, obviously, that I'm, I'm using, but, but you want to do anything that you could to possibly save your child from any harm to befall them, and so, by them being allowed, because of all this indoctrination, telling them that they can be something that they really might not be, you'd want to be able to get them help to be able to, well, better, better to come to understanding what, what they are and who they are, and maybe at a future time that they could make these decisions, and so on and so forth. There are, there's an organization called Quillette, and I heard Mr. Angus Fox talk this past Saturday about his organization. And a lot of these kids have gone and, their children have gone and they've gotten these therapies or have gotten, changed their sex and this and that, and you know what happens to those children as, as adults? They will never be able to have an orgasm because their sexual units and stuff have been, have been ruined. And imagine going through the rest of your life in, in that manner because you weren't, you were, you were guided in the, in the possible wrong way by others, and, and your parents weren't able to, to be there for you. And it's, it's a terrible injustice to children and, and, you know, the mentally challenged, you know, I, I don't know a lot about that, but you know what? They deserve as well to be, to have people that care for them, to be able to help guide them and, and make good decisions for them as well. And I, I think that most people and parents and, and caretakers to, to the challenged people have their best interests at, at stake, and, and, and there are bad apples. There's bad apples everywhere in life, but the majority of them, you know, care for their children and, and their, their, they have caregivers as such as well. They, so, yeah, so that's, that's kind of, that's kind of about the nuts and bolts of it. So, you know, let's, let's let people get therapy that need therapy and move on to taking care of the city.
Mr. Wilson, your five minutes are up. Thank you.
All right. Zen, could we have Carol Kramer next, please?
One moment. The line is open.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City councilmembers, Carol Kramer here.
Please, go ahead.
I'm overwhelmed, but not surprised. I'm overwhelmed, but not surprised at the callers that are calling in tonight because finally, we have people trying to make the city council accountable, responsible for their mistakes and bad guidance. In March, the Human Rights Commission did not present an accurate and balanced presentation to the city council regarding what conversion therapy is, the need for this therapy, and the success of this therapy. Because of this, we now see what appears to be a political agenda to ban conversion therapy. Two councilmembers pointed this out to the mayor and other councilmembers at the January 25th meeting. Mayor Bussie did comment that no conversion therapy was being practiced in Bloomington. It also appears that some political group, groups from outside our community are working to pass this ban. The Minnesota State Licensing Board for Therapists reported as of early March 2021 that there were no complaints regarding conversion therapy in the entire state of Minnesota, and that would include Bloomington folks. So, passing this would prove city councilmembers are able to use the city commissions for political wrong. Science does not support laws that prohibit any minor with unwanted homosexual attraction from their right to psychotherapy as it relates to their goals and values. These decisions are not up to city councilmembers, legislators, or political activists. The American College of Pediatricians supports the right of the individual to seek care with a licensed professional. It is important to note that Councilmember Coulter, on January 25th, stated that the ban was only meant to prevent therapists who have thousands of hours of experience helping patients in the privacy of their offices from practicing conversion therapy. Other therapy would remain. However, March 1st, Mr. Coulter wanted to criminalize conversion therapy and strip therapists of their license, which would cause the therapist, their practice, and the possibility of ending up in jail, and denying many who needed therapy the ability to get it. Obviously, this is an abuse of a therapist's First Amendment, and it's also an abuse of the individual seeking this therapy. This action of banning conversions therapy will most certainly lead to lawsuits from the individuals wanting this therapy and the suits in other states, there are therapists who provide it. There have been suits in other states, such as New York and Florida, most recently in Boca Raton, because the First Amendment protects both the persons desiring this therapy and the therapist who can provide it. When councilmembers overreach their authority, I don't think Bloomington has the money to finance such an overzealous reach. Surely, there may be legal implications. And I do want to add that the LGBT community does, I know for a fact, recruit young, vulnerable children, five years old, seven years old, eight, nine, 10, for their cause, which is an abuse that's even hard to speak of. Thank you.
Zen, could we please?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I'm loath to interrupt public comment period, but I need to be very clear. That last caller referenced, specifically said I made comments that I absolutely did not make.
Ms. Wilson.
Zen, could we have- Zen, could we have Angie McKinley, please?
Okay, one moment. The line is open.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you very much. As a resident of Bloomington, I am proud of the thoughtful and careful research that our Human Rights Commission undertook to research this issue of conversion therapy and the recommendation that they subsequently put forward to the council. I believe it is imperative for the mental health and safety of the LGBTQIA youth and vulnerable adults who reside in our city that the council vote to ban this harmful and dangerous therapy. If the council is to act in alignment with our city's strategic priorities of community image and equity inclusion, we must provide protection against interventions that have been disproven as being effective and have been overwhelmingly rejected by the major reputable medical associations and institutions around the world. Those of us who are adult citizens of Bloomington have a duty to ensure the protection of our city's minors against this destructive therapy. And I encourage our council members to fulfill that duty tonight when they vote in support of the conversion therapy ban. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
Zen, for our next caller, could we have Luca Joe Grappoli?
One moment. The line is open.
Good evening, Mayor Ducey and city council people. Thank you for allowing me a chance to tell you how I, my thoughts and feelings on this. First of all, I am not in favor of this conversion therapy ban. I want to start by saying that the Supreme Court of the United States said professional therapist's speech has the same right to freedom of speech as other speech. It aggregated decisions in the Ninth and Third Circuit Courts that have been erroneously referred to claim therapy bans are constitutional. The Eleventh Circuit Court applied to Scottus decision and ended therapy bans in its jurisdictions. With that being said, I would like to start by saying I was transgender for 34 years. My name is Luca Joe Grappoli, and I was saved by the Lord Jesus Christ because I was sexually molested as a child. And I'm going to be raw and be real with you. I was sexually molested and it tore me apart. There was extreme trauma that went on in my mind, in my spirit, and in my soul. And I was suicidal. I hated people. I was violent. I was in and out of jail so many times. I can't tell you, you can look at my record for going to jail for domestic assault. And it wasn't until I started to get therapy that started to help me. Thank God my dad had enough common sense to bring me someplace. Now, I'm not saying he did everything right, but if I hadn't had that therapy, I never would have made it. And so now, several years later, I'm telling you, I was the people that are pushing for this ban. I was on that bandwagon. I know how their game works. I did it. I caused all this. And let me tell you the sorrowful heart that I have had every day that I've had to cry out to the Lord and repent for what I've done to these children. Their blood's on my hands now. But I'm telling you that there is a lot of things that these people are saying, a lot of things. And thus far, we have eight people that are against this ban and only one person that's in favor of it. I'm going to tell you that the Minnesota Board of Marriage and Family Therapy has not issued a discipline or corrective action order or conversion therapy was a relevant fact. Accordingly, there is no public board finding or determination addressing conversion therapy. That comes from Jennifer L. Molenhoff, Executive Director of the Minnesota Board on Marriage and Family Therapy. Let me say this as well. I am the national spokesperson for, against this national, against this conversion therapy ban. And I have spoken with many senators and congresspeople. I've stood in the courtrooms at the hearings at the Minnesota State capitals. And I've given my testimony. And I've listened to these people that have said that they've been hurt by converting therapy. And my heart bled for them. And when I first started doing this, I thought, oh, my God, these people have been hurt. And so I started, you know, I already know where I'm going with this. But I approached several of them afterwards and I said, you know, I'm really sorry for what happened to you. And it's atrocity that you experienced such pain and such abuse. And I said, if you will allow me, I said, I will pay all legal fees for you to bring a case against these people that hurt you. Well, let me tell you what. Oddly enough, not one person coughed up a name or a therapist. I can't remember. Let me tell you, I know the people that abused me and I'll never forget their names. So it's not, you can, secondly, there's, or thirdly, or whatever, there is, find me anywhere in the United States of America, any practice that says we do this, conversion therapy. Nobody does conversion therapy. People go to therapy because they need help, like me. You're crying out for somebody to help work through this. And when I worked through it and somebody allowed me to express my thoughts, that's what made a difference in my life. It wasn't that somebody was sitting there going, well, you better do this. No, they just let me talk. That's what therapy is. There's, therapists aren't there to make somebody do something. They're held by a code of ethics, the same code of ethics that doctors take. And they can't abuse somebody. That's why there's zero cases of this ever happening, because it hasn't happened. The Constitution states that we have the right to choose. This is a free nation, people. We have the right to choose and now we want to put, we want to consider putting our children in the hands of the courts rather than the parents? I don't know where I'm living, but you started off with a pledge of allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Our liberties, our liberties, our unalienable rights came from God. They did not come from the government. They come from God, to the people. We, the people, give you the government, the power.
Excuse me, excuse me. Your five minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Zen, could we please have Colton Krantz?
One moment. I'm sorry, that name is not connected.
Okay. Connie Rivard?
One moment. That name is not connected as well.
Okay. And just one clarification, Zen, on Colton Krantz. Both first and last names start with a K.
Let me double check.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting. Colton is not connected.
Okay. And then could we circle back and try for Kathleen Niediger?
Okay. The line is open.
Good evening, Kathleen, are you there?
Yes.
Kathleen? Perhaps we should move on again?
Hello?
Kathleen, are you there?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Niediger, and I'm the Minnesota State Chair for Mass Resistance. I am asking you to ban conversion therapy. First, I want to say that there is documentation that some city councils come to a meeting like this one with their decision already made and just go through the format of the publicized meeting to appease the public. I hope the Bloomington City Council is not in this category and would consider all presented information before coming to a decision. You as elected officials who are elected to defend and uphold the rights of citizens, that responsibility does not include restricting access to what individual citizens deem as necessary resources which address their individual needs. As citizens of America, we have the right to determine for ourselves what is best for us. No elected official has been granted the right to make that decision for us. LGBT activists want to make it illegal to offer this help to children because it contradicts their political agenda. They believe that parents and children should not have a choice in this matter. This terrible idea puts vulnerable children in danger just to support an ideology. Therapists are necessary for those who struggle with same-sex attraction, just as therapists are necessary for those struggling with depression and for struggling marriages. The therapy you are considering tonight is correctly defined as reparative therapy. Eventually, it was dishonestly labeled "conversion therapy" to make reparative therapy seem radical and extremely harmful. Most of the LGBT-supporting evidence comes from their own supporters and is not factual or reliable. Claims have been made that the American Psychological Association issued a statement condemning conversion therapy. This is a false statement. The American Psychological Association, after harassment and intimidation by the gay rights movement, decided to no longer allow open debate on the issue, but never condemned the therapy. In fact, Dr. Cummings, the past president, publicly said he used this therapy and saw it to be successful. Any legislation which undermines parental rights goes against the U.S. Constitution and the Minnesota State Constitution. Do not let radical special interests dictate what therapy can be done and what therapy cannot be done for vulnerable children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
That is all the advanced registered callers we have. Zen, could you open it up for anybody else who's on the line wishing to speak that hasn't spoken already? To do so by pressing star one.
If you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And we have Michael Reinhardt on the line.
Good evening, welcome.
Hey, good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council for letting me call in. Again, for the record, my name is Michael Reinhardt. I'm a lifelong resident of Bloomington and I'm calling to voice my support for this ordinance. There's something that I think has been missed a little bit in this discussion that I want to unpack a bit. The whole premise of conversion therapy is that being gay is a mental illness and that it needs to be cured. That's the whole underlying point of it. Both of those things are completely wrong and not supported by any science whatsoever. The medical community is in unanimous agreement that LGBTQ people exist and that trying to convert someone's gender identity or sexual orientation is not possible and actually causes lasting harm. I've also been hearing a lot tonight about individual choice and freedom, but I think it does bear repeating that this ordinance, as I'm sure you all know, applies to minors and vulnerable adults. By definition, they are not consenting to conversion tactics. That's the whole point. They're not seeking this out, they're being forced into it. And that's why it needs to be banned. I also think it's easy to talk about LGBTQ people in the abstract. So quick before I go, I want to humanize this a little bit and share my personal story of growing up gay in Bloomington. I've been really blessed to have the unconditional love and support of my family. Unfortunately, that hasn't always been the case out for me out in the community. I've been called anti-gay slurs before. I've seen people move their kids away from me when I was holding my boyfriend's hand at Lake Normandale. I've seen derogatory things posted about me online that singled me out from my sexuality. And one of the most hurtful, I've had people, strangers, come up to me and tell me that they'll pray for me to be straight one day. And I'm sharing all of this because I know I am not the only LGBTQ Bloomington resident that has felt unsafe and unwelcomed. I cannot imagine what it's like for these youths and vulnerable adults that do not have the same support system that I've been lucky to have. I also want to say that even though the process of understanding my sexuality and dealing with homophobia has not always been easy, I am very proud of who I am, and I would not have it any other way. There are many, many, many beautiful and wonderful, incredible things about being gay. And it's important to me, I talk about the joy and the happiness of getting to openly be who I am. I want my LGBTQ peers to have that for themselves as well. We know we don't need to be changed. What would help more than anything is to not be shamed for who we are. This ordinance helps do that. I know the city council takes its responsibility to protect its most vulnerable residents very seriously. And that's why I am urging you to pass this ban. We know being gay is not a disorder. We know that conversion therapy does not do what it claims to. We know it does cause lasting harm to its victims. I really hope that you'll listen to the residents that conversion therapy directly impacts and that you'll listen to the healthcare providers in our city and adopt this ordinance. With that, I'll let you take your next caller and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any additional callers who are looking to speak on this topic?
Yes, we have Alex Palacios on the line.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Alex Palacios. And I am here as a private citizen, but also as the chair of some of the FAL, an organization that, yes, is political, but is also a conglomerate of intelligent, caring, passionate people. And I'm here today to ask the council to vote to adopt this ordinance banning conversion therapy for minors and vulnerable adults. It is a disproven and harmful practice. We have heard testimony from the resident questioning the constitutionality of such an ordinance. But in fact, the Supreme Court said that it is a fundamental principle long established that the freedom of speech and of press, which is secured by the Constitution, does not confer an absolute right to speak or publish without responsibility, whatever one way you choose, or an unrestricted and unrestricted license that gives immunity for every possible use of language and prevents the punishment of those who abuse this freedom. Essentially, what this is saying is that this is perfectly constitutional. Furthermore, I am heartbroken to hear the stigma and the vitriol that children are being subjected to because children are listening. These practices, whether you call it conversion therapy or reparative therapy, have been disproven as effective by the most prominent psychological institutions in this country. And it would be not just a shame, but negligent, criminal to expose any children to these practices. And because I know children are listening, I just want to say that, you know, for all of the LGBT community out there who's listening, you are not alone. We stand with you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. And I hope that you will practice this great responsibility of leadership that you have before you.
Thank you. Thanks for your call. Do we have additional callers looking to speak on item 7.1?
Next is Dino Reinhardt. Your line is open.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, council members. I'm a lifelong Bloomington resident. It is quite clear that con- It is quite clear that conversion therapy needs to be banned in Bloomington. Passing this ordinance is about making Bloomington a safer place for vulnerable LGBT residents. For the caller saying this is a non-issue, why don't you look at the data from the LGBT residents saying this is an issue? For the caller saying this is a non-issue, what do you say to the consensus from the medical community saying this is indeed an issue? Given that conversion therapy makes victims more likely to experience depression, anxiety, suicide, and substance abuse, ask yourself what is best for Bloomington. A vote against this ban is a vote for higher rates of depression, anxiety, and suicide. A vote against this ban is a vote to go against science. A vote against this ban is a vote against medicine. A vote against this ban sends a clear message to Bloomington residents that their city council does not value the rights of the LGBT population. I urge each and every council member to vote for banning this harmful practice. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have additional callers?
Next is Angela Vargas. Line is open.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Angela Vargas. I'm a longtime resident of Bloomington. I have also been a practicing physician for thirty, over thirty years, and I hold the Masters in Public Health. And I'm calling in to support the ordinance to prohibit conversion therapy. As a doctor, I can tell you that conversion therapy has been debunked and discredited. There is no evidence that conversion therapy can change someone's sexual orientation or gender identity. What it can do is cause lasting trauma. Those subjected to it are more likely to experience depression, consider suicide, or have chemical dependency issues. This is because conversion therapy shames and blames people for being who they are. The whole premise of this therapy is that being gay or trans is a mental illness, and that is not correct. You know, as a doctor and scientist, I want to be very clear. This is not a situation where there are two sides. The medical community is in complete agreement that conversion therapy does not do what it claims to do and is grossly unethical. I would never, and I do not believe any of my colleagues, would ever practice this quack science. The very, very few providers that are doing this in Bloomington need to be held accountable for the harm that they are causing to minors and vulnerable adults. My LGBTQ patients deserve access to compassionate and medically accurate healthcare, and that is why I'm urging the city council to pass this ordinance. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you for your call. Additional callers?
Next is for Noah Meeting. Line is open.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You might want to speak up just a bit if you could, and if you could repeat your name so we have it officially for the record so we can hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Noah Meeting. Good evening, city council members and Mayor Bussey. Thank you for taking up this proposed ordinance and for hosting this hearing. I would like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance. I would like to put on my scholar hat and speak to the constitutionality of conversion therapy bans. Well-written conversion therapy bans are completely constitutional, and the Supreme Court has refused to change this precedent on multiple occasions. One of the more serious accusations against this ordinance is that it inhibits free speech, but the Third Circuit Court decided in King versus Governor of New Jersey that conversion therapy as speech must be considered as medical treatment within the confines of a state-licensed professional relationship. Here, speech protections are limited. The city has the ability to treat conversion therapy as any other verbal medical practice and regulate against demonstrable malpractice. Conversion therapy has been found time and again to be injurious, especially to minors, and circuit courts have upheld the usefulness of these studies in court. Another point on free speech. Contrary to the claims of some opponents, the ordinance actually would not prevent licensed professionals from discussing or expressing their views on conversion therapy or homosexuality. In that way, medical practitioners have the exact same rights as the rest of us. They can actually talk about these topics as much as they want, either publicly or privately, they just can't do the therapy. When they do, it becomes medical practice, which is in the legislative purview of the city. Opponents of the ban also allege it infringes on religious freedoms, but the Third Circuit Court ruled otherwise in King versus Governor of New Jersey. Ordinances like this one are neutral and generally applicable to all religions, which means the city needs only a reasonable basis to pass the statute. In this case, that reasonable basis is the well-being of minors. Moreover, there is no religious freedom right to medical practices deemed unsafe by neutral and generally applicable law. Altogether, banning conversion therapy does not infringe on speech and religious rights. Instead, it recognizes the freedom and dignity of each LGBTQ child and protects them. It's enormously ironic that proponents of conversion therapy decry indoctrination, and I deplore the innuendos made tonight that LGBTQ people are inherently broken, predatory, or anything other than our neighbors. I believe each of us who is LGBTQ is made in the image of God and in all of our queer beauty. I implore the city council not be swayed by arguments against the proposed ordinance and to vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your call. Who is next?
Next is John Reinhardt. Line is open.
Hi, my name is John Reinhardt, and I've been a Bloomington resident for thirty years. I am in favor of a ban on conversion therapy. What is really striking to me is how many U.S. Medical and Psychological Associations have come out and been against conversion therapy. The list is pretty long. It includes the American Medical Association, the American Psychiatric Association, the American Psychological Association, the American Counseling Association, the National Association of Social Workers. It goes on and on. And then if you go over to the United Kingdom, you get a similar, long, long list. So the medical consensus is pretty clear on this, and I've gone back and actually read some of the statements from these different organizations so that the consensus is there. This isn't like left-wing science or anything like that. These are the mainline medical organizations in both English-speaking countries. Another aspect which I hadn't thought about is the human rights aspect. The United Nations Human Rights Council came out against conversion therapy in a 2020 report. So I am very much in favor of a ban on conversion therapy. Thank you for listening to me.
And thank you for your call. Do we have other calls?
Yes, next is Elizabeth Longo. Line is open.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Longo, and I have called in before on this in other sessions, and I am not debating whether a person has a biological inclination towards a non-heterosexual sexuality, nor am I debating the issue of gender dysphoria. What I would like to say is this. In the Human Rights Commission's argument for voting yes on this egregious ordinance, it appears they did not interview, in that very long list that they presented on that nice little slide, any of the tens of thousands of people that have sought and received successful therapy for their issues, nor I don't see any hard data, any interviews from any of the therapists that actually treat the clients. The big deal that I see is that there is a complete and utter lack of objective data, and instead, a lot of ambiguous claims, such as "all of the medical community agrees," or "everybody says it's harmful." Where is the data? I believe a prior caller stated that in the state of Minnesota, there were zero complaints about reparative therapy. I don't know what timeframe that was. I'd be curious to find out, but if you had done your homework, we'd know. Also, there is something I need to mention about equity and equality. We are all equal in the eyes of God, gay, straight, black, white, male, female, created, equal in dignity and worth, precious, unique, and unrepeatable, and therefore, we all deserve the equal opportunity to strive to be and do one's best versus equity, which we've forgotten about, equality, and our striving for equity, which is just the administration of proportional fairness. What about the equality to strive to be and do one's best? What if a child who is gender confused, that would eventually grow out of it, even just one, let's save the one, and keep the conversion or reparative therapy open? What if that child is not indeed a trans, but is perhaps going to grow up to be a wonderful father, a leader? Yes, they could be a wonderful father and leader, or I should say, a parent as a trans person, but they would still inherently, biologically, scientifically speaking, be a male. And what if that confused child would go to a kind, loving therapist that listens to them and helps them work through their issues? Shouldn't we save the one? I've heard that in prior conversations about saving the one. I say leave it open, freedom of choice. It is shameful that here in our city, we forgot about the fact that we have an abortuary that aborts future trans children, future lesbians, future gays. We forgot about that human rights issue in our rush on this. I heard someone else talk about a preemptive ban. How about the preemptive ban we should have done a couple of years ago on that? Tying it all back to the dignity of the human person, I believe in the freedom of choice for the parent and the minor. The minor does have rights. The minor has the rights to pick their therapist. If they want a therapist in this vein, let them have it. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you for your call. Do we have additional callers on the line?
Yes, next is Megan Cohen. Line is open.
Good evening.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, yes, my name is Megan Cohen. I appreciate the time. I will be honest, I don't have a speech written or anything really prepared. I just came to speak from my heart. I am the mother of a nine-year-old transgender child. This is my life. I live this. My child does not need saved. My child is not choosing this. I want our family to live in a city and a community that accepts us and supports us and is not pushing conversion therapy on us. My child has a hard enough time in their daily walk of life. I am leading with love. That is my job. My child trusts me with their care. I am not going to send my child anywhere that tells them that they are wrong. My child is nine and has a hard enough time and wants to be accepted. Again, it has nothing to do with religion at all. And again, to hear comments about being saved or confused. My child was born this way, and until you are walking in a parent's shoes, you don't know. It is not fair for my child to have somebody force them into something that tells them they need to believe they're a different gender. My child is not confused and does not need saved, and we love living in Bloomington with people that accept us, and I really hope that the city council will support my family, my child, and all of the rest of the community like us to continue to feel safe, and I pray that we ban this conversion therapy. When I mention it to friends and family, they are embarrassed that they have no idea that this is taking place. So I appreciate the fact that this has come to council so that more people can be made aware that this is taking place. My child should feel accepted and not that my child needs to be saved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have additional callers?
Next is Laura Thompson. Your line is open.
Hi, my name's Laura Thompson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Laura Thompson. First, to my LGBTQ siblings who are listening or watching tonight, please know that you are loved and have worth. There's been a lot of hard things said tonight, and I just want to put that out first. But I come to you tonight as the lead minister of Minnesota Valley Unitarian Universalist Fellowship in Bloomington. We're proud to be a welcoming congregation to the LGBTQ community, and we continue to do the ever-evolving work to be an inclusive community and free ourselves from inclusive biases and move toward being a community that is not centered solely on heterosexual and/or cisgender experiences. As people of faith, we honor, promote, and affirm the inherent worth and dignity of every person. We believe that the practice of conversion therapy does not honor a person's worth and dignity, and we encourage the city council to vote to ban this practice, which has been proven not only to be ineffective but harmful to patients. But don't take our word for it. As has been repeated before, the following organizations have all made statements regarding the ineffectiveness and dangers of conversion or reparative therapy. Those organizations include the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, American Academy of Pediatrics, American Association for Marriage and Family Therapy, American Counseling Association, American Medical Association, the Human Rights Commission, American Psychiatric Association, American Psychological Association, American School Counselor Association, American School Health Association, and the National Association of Social Workers. We stand with these organizations. We stand with the LGBT community, and we ask the council to vote on banning conversion therapy in the city of Bloomington. As a minister, I often refer people to counseling or to therapists. Many therapists help folks work through issues with their sexual or gender identities. This ban does not prevent counselors or therapists from listening to or helping people who are struggling with their issues of sexual or gender identity issues. It just prevents them from doing so under the presumption of converting them to a preferred sexuality or gender identity. Again, we ask the city passes this ordinance, and we hope that in June, when the pride flags fly high at the Bloomington Civic Plaza, as they have before, that Bloomington is doing all that it can to make Bloomington a welcoming and safe place to live for all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
We have Amber Mastwick. Your line is open.
Hi, Amber Mastwick. I've been a Bloomington resident for the last year. My pronouns are she/her, and I support the ban against conversion therapy. My brain's a little wrecked from listening to a lot of these comments tonight, so hopefully this comes out the way I want it to. The countless number of friends or young people or students I have worked with through the years have had more mental health, economic, and relationship issues due to the severely damaged relationships that they have with their parents, guardians, or other people who are responsible for their upbringing because they demand that they constrain themselves to a limited understanding of a restrictive and binary gender or sexuality identity. Queer and questioning young people need to be given support to fully explore their gender and sexuality and know that they will be safe, if not at home, then definitely in the community that offers them a refuge and opportunity to be themselves and to be safe and comfortable in being themselves. Conversion therapy does not do this. It is cruel in that it associates natural feelings about gender and sexuality with pain, disobedience, threats, and withdrawal of affection amongst many other things. That the worst harm to come to children who are questioning themselves or even not quite sure of their sexuality or gender, because most folks will tell you that they already knew at a young age, the worst harm to come to them is to not be given the full and loving support of their parents or guardians. And one last thing is that I wanted to say to the man earlier who said children who are given the knowledge to explore their own sexuality and gender will never achieve an orgasm, a whole bunch of lesbians disagree with you on that. an orgasm, a whole bunch of lesbians disagree with you on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Do we have additional callers on the line?
Next is Mara Globka. Your line is open.
Mara, are you there?
...Globka, your line is open.
Are you there? Perhaps we should go on, we'll double back if we need to. Could you see who the next caller might be, please?
Next is Elise Bussey. Your line is open. Hello, yes, uh, my name is Elise Bussey and I just wanted to thank the city council and mayor for bringing this issue forward. Um, with, with all the scientific research that has been done, conversion therapy has shown to be harmful and even life-threatening. Therapy is meant to heal, uplift, affirm, and conversion therapy does the complete opposite. Conversion therapy tries to fix people who are not broken. Hearing the well-informed and well-thought testimonies from the people in favor of this ban is, is absolutely inspiring and, and I hope that you see that too, especially, especially the last one. So, thank you again for bringing this forward and please vote to ban conversion therapy. Thank you.
Thank you for the call.
Next is Billy Holmes. Your line is open.
Good evening.
Hello, yes, good evening, mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Billy Holmes and, uh, just wanted to start off by saying, most of the discussions thus far has been emotional generalizations and, uh, you know, we try to deal with the facts, but somehow the facts get skewed. Um, and I'm speaking against the ban. Like many of my other callers, we think that's a unnecessary restriction. Uh, and I can refute all of the points made by the callers in favor of the ban if I had an hour, but I don't have an hour. And the last comment I wanted to make is that the law as written is too ambiguous. Um, I'll read from the definition of conversion therapy. "Any practice, conduct, or treatment by a provider as defined in this article that seeks to change an individual's sexual orientation or gender, including efforts to, et cetera, et cetera." So this law as written, uh, could include sex change therapy and sex change operations because as I read it, it applies to any kind of therapy dealing with sexual orientation. So I think it's too ambiguous. Um, there, it would be very difficult to enforce it and I want to thank everybody for their time and I hope to have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Do we have additional folks on the line?
Next is Chris Reinhardt. Your line is open.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Chris Reinhardt. I'm a queer and trans person who grew up in Bloomington. I knew I was queer from a very young age and I also grew up in a time before gay marriage was legal. And when society told me to act differently, to be someone I wasn't. I wasn't indoctrinated like the callers claimed. It was just who I was. And 25 years later, here I am. When I received identity-affirming care, my depression and anxiety went from severe to mild. To be clear, this identity-affirming care didn't tell me I had to be gay. It just didn't shame me into silence. I'm able to live a happy, healthy life due to receiving identity-affirming care rather than conversion therapy. I can only imagine the consequences if I'd been belittled and shamed for who I am. I now work in public health and science communications. Science shows that conversion therapy, conversion therapy does not work. In fact, it leads to increased rates of depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, and substance abuse. Science does show that LGBTQ youth who are supported are happier and healthier. Conversion therapy does still happen and happens in Minnesota, unlike with some things that other callers have claimed. I routinely refer members of my community to therapists who specialize them through the trauma caused by conversion therapy. Please vote yes and end conversion therapy for minors and vulnerable adults.
Thank you for the call. Additional callers?
Yes, we have Mara Globka on the line.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, welcome.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Finally. I actually, please don't start my time yet because I actually registered early and in that process, I was misgendered four times, um, and then I was never called. And, uh, so we'll start with that. Good evening, council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mara Globka. I am a 67-year-old transgender woman currently residing in neighboring Richfield. I am also the current chair of the Richfield Human Rights Commission and a parent to three grown sons. My pronouns are she/her, whether I sound like it or not. And I'm here to speak in support of this ordinance. I testified in support of the statewide ban two years ago at the Capitol and in front of the city council when Minneapolis passed theirs. The reason I was moved to do that is related to my experience with Catholic charities when I was 15 years old. It wasn't classic conversion therapy. I didn't get beaten with a Bible or experience any of the bizarre and cruel practices that are frequently a part of that sort of thing, but I was required to go with the knowledge that there was only one acceptable outcome. That stands as the most traumatic episode of my youth. One that I had deeply suppressed for most of my life until a therapist took me back to that time using a relaxation technique. It really opened my eyes to how people suppress things that hurt them. The reason it was so painful is that it marked the time in my life when I knew with absolute certainty that my parents didn't love or accept the truth of me, that there was no one in my life I could trust, and in that time, I was pretty alone in this world. I knew then, as I knew all of my life, beginning with my first memories, that my gender was my gender and it was as unchangeable as which hand was dominant. I think that I'm unique and that I never wished not to be what we now call transgender, even though I waited almost six decades to transition. I have always known that it is just a part of who I am, how I was born. It is not simply a feeling, as was asserted earlier. I have always known that intuitively and all of the forces in my life, and there were many, were never going to change, change that, nor did I want them to because I always knew intuit, intuitively that there was really nothing wrong with me at all. The evidence of that is that while living in my assigned role, I took a lot, took on a lot of responsibilities successfully in my working life and as a parent. I always knew that transitioning my gender would make me happy, but that was such an understatement that it astounded me. And the thing is, I have witnessed that same joy over and over again as the director of Transforming Families Minnesota, a local support group for trans youth and their families. The joy of living as your true self is the same, whether you're six or 60. And so, Bloomington, please pass this very modest measure that I would liken to passing background checks for controlling gun violence. It should be a slam dunk, in my opinion. And as soon as you pass it, Richfield will be endeavoring to pass one of our own so there isn't a gap in coverage between the city of Minneapolis and Bloomington that licensed providers can escape to. Conversion therapy is well-known to be harmful and it doesn't work. And that's what every major medical and mental health organization says. In addition, Dr. Robert Spitzer, who is considered the modern father of conversion therapy, based on a study he did in 2003, came to the conclusion that his method didn't work in 2012 and he apologized to the gay community for the harm that he caused. I urge Bloomington to make a public statement to that effect by passing this ban. Thank you.
Thank you for the call. Do we have additional callers?
Uh, there are no additional public comments at this time. You may continue.
So we do not have any additional callers who wish to speak on this issue?
Oh, um, we have a line of Kelly Abedi. The line is open.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, so, hi, mayor and council members. My name is Kelly Abedi. Um, I'm calling as a Bloomington resident. I'm also a healthcare provider and a bisexual woman myself. I want to say thank you to the Human Rights Commission and Councilmember Coulter, um, for their work on this ordinance. I'd like to center this conversation back on the information we do know. What we do know is that LGBTQ people do not have a mental illness that needs to be fixed, changed, or repaired. We know that conversion therapy is harmful. We know that this therapy is not a recommended or recognized approach to therapy by any major medical association. In addition, we know there is simply no evidence to support its effectiveness. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, there is no evidence that conversion therapy helps and in fact, it actually inflicts lasting damage on children. In addition, the American Psychological Association states, quote, "The APA does not believe that same-sex orientation should or needs to be changed and efforts to do so represent a significant risk of harm by subjecting individuals to forms of treatment which have not been scientifically validated and by undermining self-esteem when sexual orientation fails to change." No credible evidence exists that any mental health intervention can reliably and safely change sexual orientation, nor from a mental health perspective, does sexual orientation need to be changed. The APA goes even further and actually calls on lawmakers to ban the, quote, "harmful and discriminatory practice of conversion therapy." So the question is, why do all the major medical associations stand against conversion therapy? It's because this therapy can lead to lasting depression, anxiety, and shame. In the Trevor Project's National Mental Health Survey, 10% of respondents reported undergoing conversion therapy. These youth were more than twice as likely to attempt suicide in the next year. Conversion therapy is unethical and deeply harmful. We've also heard claims made tonight that this is a non-issue for Bloomington and I guess the state as a whole because people do not actually undergo conversion therapy. The UCLA School of Law released a report estimating that 20,000 LGBTQ minors in states without protection will be subjected to conversion therapy. This does not sound like a non-issue to me. Lastly, I'd like to address the claim that we can, quote, "save the one," end quote, from a future of being queer or trans. All I have to say is, we do not need to be saved. There is nothing flawed or wrong with LGBTQ individuals or children. In 2021, this should not even be an argument or a discussion. Conversion therapy has no clinical benefit and leads to lasting harm. Please ban this harmful practice in Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. Do we have additional callers on the line?
Yes, next is Beth Fraser. Your line is open.
Hi, thank you so much for having me, council members and mayor. My name is Beth Fraser and I want to thank you for considering the ban of conversion therapy. Um, as other callers have pointed out, the ordinance is only designed to protect children and vulnerable adults and it's because they are particularly vulnerable to this abuse. I, um, know how vulnerable those children are because when I was just about 14, all of my peers bullied me because they thought I was gay and it was, um, super traumatic for me and, um, and painful and luckily, it was just children. Conversion therapy is an adult telling a child that their worldview is wrong and that would inflict so much more pain and trauma. And, um, so I'm not surprised that the research, research shows that conversion therapy can lead to depression, decreased self-esteem, substance abuse, and suicidal behavior. So I want to thank you for, um, taking this stand. It really will help protect children and, um, make Bloomington a more welcome, more welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more callers on the line?
Again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Next is Anna Goh. Your line is open.
Hello, um...
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Um, I'm here calling in support of the ordinance banning conversion therapy. Um, I've lived in Bloomington my whole life and I am in high school right now. Uh, first and foremost, I feel like this is something that's kind of been brought up within the call. Um, but the policing of gender identities and sexual orienta, and sexual orientations of the LGBTQ plus community needs to stop. Um, being LGBTQIA+ is not a choice and we need to stop perpetuating this idea that it is something that can be or should be changed. And the idea that being a part of the LGBTQ plus community, um, is a choice or that is youth who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community are confused, which I saw was brought up in the call. Um, it's demeaning and harmful. And again, this idea that, uh, one's sexuality can be reversed, uh, is not only wrong, but it's dangerous. And then I also want to reiterate that the LGBTQ plus community is not an agenda. Um, I'm going to read a quote from the Trevor Project's, uh, 2020 national survey on LGBTQ youth mental health, um, which highlights the gravity of the psychological and mental harms caused by conversion therapy, um, specifically in 2020, I mean, yeah, 2020. I know that the, uh, Human Rights Commission also, um, cited some of the Trevor Project's work, but I think it is important to reiterate. Um, the quote says, "10% of LGBTQ youth reported undergoing conversion therapy, with 70% reporting it occurred when they were under 18." The youth who reported undergoing conversion therapy reported more than twice the rate of attempting suicide in the past year compared to those who did not. And this is and should be alarming. Um, this is what we do know about conversion therapy. And again, quoting the Trevor Project, there are no credible scientific studies that support the claims that conversion therapists actually change a person's sexual orientation. I know, um, someone from the medical field came on and said that as well, but I also want to reiterate that. To conclude, I think our first priority should be the quality of life and health of our community members. Uh, these statistics show, and there are many more, that conversion therapy deliberately harms LGBTQ youth and because of this, the logical response, um, would be to do everything in our power to eliminate that source of harm and to start by listening to our LGBTQ youth. Um, this is not a radical idea. If we as a city want to truly be an accepting and welcoming place for all people, um, we must protect and uplift our LGBTQ plus community members. And this starts with banning conversion therapy in our city and this is the bare minimum. Thank you, uh, for your time, um, and that is all I have.
Thank you for your comments. We have additional callers.
Next is Angela Tona. Your line is open.
Um, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Uh, my name is Angela Tona. I use she/her pronouns. Um, I'm a queer woman and I'm a policy strategist at Outfront Minnesota. Um, I want to thank the council for holding this hearing this evening and hearing all the testimonies of affected community members. I want to bring it back to the three options that we talked about earlier. As I have before, I want to urge you to please pass this ordinance with option A of just administrative fines as a consequence for conversion therapy. There is absolutely no reason why an LGBTQ young person or vulnerable adult needs to subject themselves to the judicial process just to report instances of conversion therapy. As Attorney Murphy shared, this can be extremely traumatizing and will lead to people not reporting. As we know, this could give an illegitimate idea of what, of, of the reports of conversion therapy in Bloomington. So you really won't know what's going on in the area if you don't have the trust in community and you don't have the ability... and you don't have the ability for young folks and vulnerable adults to actually report. I want to say to all of the incredible people, the incredible LGBTQ people that have shared their stories today, thank you so much. You are heard, you are cared for, and we are really in this together. Thank you so much for having me speak, and I will pass it to the next caller.
Thank you. Do we have additional callers?
Next is Marsha Sitzner. Line is open.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I really appreciate the chance. And I am recently moved out of Bloomington, but it's where I raised my children. I'm a parent. I'm a nationally certified school psychologist. And pretty much my whole adult life, I've been a researcher. I was particularly touched by Chris Reinhardt's testimony, as I've known him most of his life. When I evaluated therapies either as a, to refer families within schools or for my own children, I consider both effectiveness towards the purported goals and unintended negative outcomes. Given that countless studies have not only shown this technique has no therapeutic efficacy because it proposes a cure for something not actually a disorder, but that it also increases the risk of self-harm and suicide among those subjected to it, I and all reasonable people working within the mental health arena with young people condemn this practice as actively harmful. Two organizations that I'm a member of that were not cited earlier, I just want to lift up the National Association of School Psychologists and the Minnesota School Psychological Association have issued letters against this practice. Research shows it caused a link between the assumptions and attitudes of this practice, not just the practice, but those assumptions and attitudes and suicide risk and self-harm. These outcomes are found regardless of the actual practices used, although the harsh treatments and some practitioners is even worse of a bad thing. So for the sake of children and their long-term mental well-being, I urge the council to make Bloomington safer by not permitting this threat to public health. I say this as a parent of a queer person raised in the community and as a community volunteer who knows several of the people who have previously testified. Thank you guys so much for giving me this chance to comment.
Thank you for your call. Do we have additional callers?
Again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Next is for Connie Revert. The line is open.
Good evening, welcome. Good evening, welcome. Maybe we should move on to the next caller and double back if we need to.
Again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. There are no public comments at this time. You may continue.
Well, council, we had 90 minutes of very good comments by many members of the community. I think we'll give it one more call here in just a minute, and then I will look for a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have, I will ask one last time, are there any callers who wish to speak to this issue?
Right, again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad.
I'm assuming there's no one left to come forward, so council, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing tonight.
So moved, Councilmember Loman. Second mark.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 7.1. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Our public hearing on item 7.1 has been closed. I do want to thank everybody who called in. I thought that was a good discussion. We heard, as I said, from a lot of different folks, a lot of different viewpoints. Appreciate people who spent a lot of time on hold and waited to call in or waited for their time to speak. And I appreciate it. I think it was a good discussion, so thanks much for that. Council, we have, we have two pieces of this puzzle that we need to discuss, I think. First of all, is the ordinance itself. And then secondly, the punishment. If we would adopt the ordinance, what would be the outcome? What would be the consequences of the ordinance? So I want to know, are there any additional questions that came up that the council has? Before we really dig into discussion on this, are there any unanswered questions that came up as we listened to callers or that in response that maybe popped up after you, in reflection on the presentation that we heard earlier this evening?
Mayor, you might not be able to see my hand.
I do not, Councilmember Loman. I'm sorry, you're off the screen right now. Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Loman.
All right, Mayor, I got to try to be real quick as possible here. We just did two hours, two and a half, two hours and 20 minutes here. So one of the points that one of the callers had brought up is about the opposing point of view. And I know that councilmember, one of our other councilmembers had commented on that. And I wanted to just see if staff could comment on that in terms of, just in terms of the credibility of the other points of view that were not brought forward, that we're careful in terms of making sure that we're basing this within evidentiary fact. But if I could get a comment from staff on that, if I'm understanding that correctly.
I think either from staff or perhaps the members of our commissioners from the Human Rights Commission.
Yeah, especially the Human Rights Commission. I'd like to hear from those folks.
Commissioner Smithson or Chair Bosu, do you have any comments, responses to that question?
Sure, I can, I can start, and then Anita and Melissa, if you want to jump in, if you have any more. So we definitely recognize that there's many organizations that do not support conversion therapy. I think our research, really based, our research on the organizations that recognize and promote LGBTQIA rights and see LGBTQIA rights as human rights. And many of the organizations that do not support conversion therapy, we did not feel supported LGBTQ rights overall.
Commissioner Smithson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. One thing that I will bring up, I know several callers mentioned an organization, the American College of Pediatrics. That's one that's often cited, saying that it's a medical organization. They are actually designated as a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. And so that is, you know, a group that does not want to see communities protect LGBTQ people from conversion therapy. So they support conversion therapy, and they are designated as a hate group. And so we just didn't really feel that that was something that was a credible viewpoint to bring in. We know that LGBTQ people are true and authentic to themselves and should be trusted for their own, you know, for their own identities. And so to kind of call into, and to elevate organizations that, you know, say that they are not, you know, real or that they're choosing something or they should be saved, that felt more harmful than it felt helpful with regards to this presentation.
Okay, I'm going to move on to my next question. In terms of the religious groups who have, who want to still practice this type of work, this particular ordinance, from my understanding, does not restrict those folks who are clergy members who want to practice this particular piece. It does not restrict the religious ability for those folks to be able to practice religious, this process of religious-type conversion therapy. Is that my understanding correct? I know that was a question that was asked by those folks calling it.
Mr. Zuniga?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, you are correct. This ordinance does not prohibit clergy or religious officials from conducting or practicing conversion therapy as long as they remain accountable to their religious domination or sect.
Let's see here. I wish I would have asked this question earlier. I'll get this one out of the way. Some callers are calling in and saying, where is the data on this? And I would submit that the Human Rights Commission brought forward a slide of those folks who have studied this from medical and a psychological piece, and their letters of support are evidence as opposed to this type of therapy. Is that, is that a fair representation of the Human Rights Commission's point of view?
Chair Bosu?
Yeah, can you repeat the question, Councilmember Loman? Sorry.
Yeah, not a problem. So we've got, we had a caller that called in and said, where's the data? You know, there's no data out there supporting this particular fact. Of course, we know you guys put forward hundreds of pages worth of data from different studies, both supported from medical evidence and from the psychological community as evidence. And so that would be my understanding of what the Human Rights Commission is putting forward and saying, this is the evidence that we're putting forward, this should be banned. Is that, is that a correct interpretation there?
Correct. And so, yeah, our data comes from, yep, a lot of the literature from these organizations.
Which are all scientifically based. Is that correct? Okay, I just want to be sure that these are all scientifically based. So if we make a, you know, kind of make a square around it, we've got stuff that's based on evidence from a scientific point of view, and we've got those who don't have a scientific point of view. And I think this is what Councilmember Carter had brought forward and said that it was based on evidence. Just got a couple more here, and then I'll get off this, we'll get my other councilmembers in. Let's see here. There was some, I think, misunderstanding in terms of when this was brought forward. I know we got busy in terms of when this conversion therapy piece had been requested by Councilmember Coulter. It was prior to, my understanding was prior to this particular COVID season that we had. We got busy with other things and weren't able to get to this. And so I know one caller had called in and said that it wasn't, it didn't make sense for us to go through this, but I want to make sure that folks understand the process for this was started earlier on, prior to the, to the actual virus hitting us. Is my understanding of that correct as well?
That is correct.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. I'll just respond to that, that we had received that request from Councilmember Coulter in the fall of 2019. And as the Human Rights Commission was developing its 2020 work plan, it was included at that time.
Yeah.
And that was when the work began.
I just think there was a little bit of confusion there, and I just want to be sure that the record is straight on that in terms of when this came forward. My last piece here is for, someone had mentioned that this is ambiguity. There's ambiguity in this particular writing on this ordinance. But my understanding is, is this, the framework that we have here that's been placed forward around this particular ban, around, the therapy is not ambiguous. I just want to be sure that we're not passing some type of ordinance, bringing forward that's ambiguous. Is there any ambiguity within this particular ban that we're bringing forward?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, I do not think this ordinance is ambiguous. And again, we looked at various other jurisdictions that have enacted similar-type bans, and we use similar-type language with them. And so I don't think the ordinance is ambiguous, and I actually think it creates some clarity about what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Thank you for that, clarifying that. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions of clarification, hopefully. One of the callers had referenced, I believe it's the American Psychological Psychiatric Association, and indicated that they, in fact, do not support this. The information that I found, and I can quote this here, states that APA opposes any psychiatric treatment such as reparative or conversion therapy that is based on the assumption that homosexuality per se is a mental disorder or is based on the a priori assumption that the patient should change his or her homosexual orientation. And then several years later, they issued another one that said, in American, the American Psychiatric Association does not believe that same-sex orientation should or needs to be changed, and efforts to do so represent a significant risk of harm. Am I correct in understanding that the APA opposes conversion therapy?
Does anyone know specifically, can confirm or deny? I think Councilmember Nelson, I think, obviously did the research there.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. That is also the same research that we found and was part of the presentation on March 1st as well, with that exact statement.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, since that had been brought up during the testimony there. The second thing that I want to do is, I mean, we certainly heard from a number of people very passionate on both sides of this issue, and heard personal testimony from people on both sides of this issue, and some of it very frankly gut-wrenching and hard to listen to. And some of the stories of things that kids, children have gone through, and frankly, even many of the adult stories have gone through. And we all know, and we've talked about it a number of times, and it's been something that I personally have been passionate about, is making sure we have the mental health resources available to people in our community, particularly our children. And I just want to make sure, and I asked this last time, and I want to make sure again, this does not prevent a child from getting helpful, thoughtful, compassionate therapeutic services if they've been abused, if they have questions about their sexuality, if they have any concerns, if they're feeling depressed or anxious. This does not prevent them from getting professional help with those issues, does it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, you are correct. It does not prevent them from getting those mental health services.
Okay. And then my last question, what this does prevent is a therapy provider, a licensed provider, coming in with a preformed judgment against this child that they should be heterosexual, that they should be something that maybe they aren't, that there's a predetermined pathway that they want to put that child on. That is what is being prevented. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, yes, the ordinance would prohibit efforts that seek to change or to eliminate one's gender identity or sexual orientation.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Beloga?
Good evening. If we could go to the slide presentation where it showed the institutions that have come out against...
Can we get the slide deck up quick, please? I see you're working on it there. I appreciate that. Here it comes.
There we go.
There it is.
Are you able to see it? Okay.
Yes, we are. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. So, oops, oh, there we go. So I know that there was an organization that was mentioned, and that was the, I believe, the Minnesota Association of Social Workers. Maybe it was the National Association of Minnesota Social Workers. But that had just announced punitive steps to be taken against... steps to be taken against members of the organization who do practice conversion therapy. Since everybody else on the list denounced it, am I to believe that all of the listed organizations have also provided guidance to their membership on what they may or may not be able to do in terms of practice ethics and code of conduct? I don't know who I'm addressing this to, but whoever feels to be the appropriate person, please feel, you know, able to step forward and respond.
Ms. Wors Prasad, do you have insight on that one?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Beloga and Mayor Bostie. So we, we at this time are just aware of the release, the press release, which was included in the packet from the National Association of Social Workers. We, the Human Rights Commission did not research each of these individual organizations as to what the violations are within their own organizations in terms of if it's a loss of membership, or if it impacts their license or membership. So we cannot speak to that. Just what we have on the National Association of Social Workers.
Okay, thank you. But it's reasonably to believe that these are the governing bodies for these disciplines that we're seeing, psychiatric association and societies and so forth. So my question is, is if they denounce it, why haven't they taken steps to control it within the powers that they have as an organization?
That's a question as well that I I wouldn't be able to speak to this evening. We'd have to contact each of these organizations and see outside of their statements what the impacts are within their specific individual organizations or associations.
You know, it 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 just seems so counterintuitive that these organizations would suggest to denounce it and then not take affirmative action in doing so. So I would really like to know what the, you know, the the answer to that question is before I am able to go forward with this item. You know, there's been an awful lot of, and I think it's been mentioned already, testimony on both sides of this. And particularly the people who have experienced some of the problems with being gay, whether it's social or through therapy or through lack of familial support. You know, it's really hard to sit and listen to all that. But I find it just beyond my comprehension to think that these organizations who are in a position to control their membership professionally with standards would not, would denounce it as an organization, yet not impose sanctions on the membership if they chose to continue doing it, other than we know of the social workers of Minnesota, which, you know, that's a very positive step forward in my mind.
Mayor and Councilmember Beloga, may I respond to that?
Commissioner Smithson.
Yes, thank you. So many of these organizations that are listed, they are, they're professional associations, but they're not necessarily licensing bodies. They don't have legislative power. And to take it a step further from that, when conversion therapy is occurring, it's not being billed to insurance as conversion therapy. They may be treating somebody with a diagnosis of depression, and they'll say, you are depressed because you're gay, and if you weren't gay anymore, you wouldn't be, you know, be dealing with depression. So let's, let's not be gay anymore, and then you don't have to deal with this. And that's kind of how they get the workaround. But as far as these organizations listed, these are just professional associations who generally guide their members on best practices. They may do education on, you know, different medical and for some of these educational items, but these are not licensing bodies, and they're not legislative bodies. So they can't actually make something illegal, and they can't revoke someone's license because they are just organizations that don't have the power to do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Beloga.
Ms. Smithson, I've not said anything about revoking license. I was talking about the code of conduct and ethics of the practice. And these organizations certainly have control and direction for their members. And that's what the point of my question was. So, but you've already answered my next question, I think, is how many bodies who do have control over licensure have denied and said that they would take sanctions in positive respect against their members who act on conversion therapy? Is there any that we know of, or is it a non?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, we did reach out to at least four licensing boards within the state of Minnesota to ask them what what they would do if they did receive a complaint. More specifically, if they received a complaint from the city attorney's office that a violation of the ordinance had occurred. I think it's, you know, all all four licensing agencies said the same thing, which is they would treat this like any other complaint that they've received. They would, you know, first determine if they have jurisdiction over the particular license or provider, and then they would conduct an investigation to see if there's been any violations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. Mr. Zuniga, did you happen to ask the question, did they believe that this would be in their purview of authority had a complaint been filed against one of their members for conversion therapy?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, they did not answer that specific question. They simply let us know that they would treat it like any other complaint and investigate it according to their jurisdiction.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Mayor, I have other questions on the options, if you would. So I will defer those until a later point as appropriate.
As we dive into into this, let's make sure that we've got questions of just clarification taken care of first, and then we'll, then we'll get into, I think, as I said, to break it down into the discussion on the proposed prohibition, and then the discussion on the proposed enforcement, sort of break it down in those two ways. So, Council, any additional questions? Background clarification questions or anything from the presentation or anything callers might have brought up? Seeing none, and I think I see most of your hands. I don't know if I see everybody quite yet, but got a lot of folks on there tonight. So what I would like to do, as I said, break it into a couple of different pieces here, and I would like to have that, the question right away regarding the prohibition itself, and then the civil fines. And I, I think to get the the issue on the table and to just kind of show where we're going and to try and get us going, I'm going to move that we approve Sections 1, 2, and 3 of ordinance, of the ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the City Code prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy on minors and vulnerable adults within the city limits, and establishing enforcement and penalties for violations.
Second.
Second, Coulter.
I, I've got a motion, and did I hear a second from Councilmember Lohman or Councilmember Coulter? I think I heard both of you.
Coulter. Give it to Coulter.
Coulter, Councilmember Coulter with the second. So there we have the the motion on the table at first for the prohibition of it. So I'd like to open it up for discussion on the prohibition of the practice itself here within the city of Bloomington. Questions on this? Comments? Discussion? Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I guess I just want to very clearly state that I do stand in solidarity with our LGBTQ residents, especially our LGBTQ youth. And I just want to say that I'm sorry if you were listening tonight and heard things that were incredibly hurtful to you. I, I know that you were born to, you are who you were born to be, and you are welcomed and you are loved in Bloomington. So based on the recommendations of almost all of the major medical and psychological associations that not only demonstrate, that demonstrates that conversion therapy is, is not based in any kind of science, it is also harmful and traumatic for those who are experiencing it. What I also understand to be true is this does not apply to religious leaders who are praying for people. It doesn't prohibit consenting adults to seek conversion therapy. And then it also does not prohibit evidence-based medically sound therapy for youth and vulnerable adults who are grappling with their gender identity or their sexual orientation. So based on that information, based on all of the testimony that we heard tonight, based on the numerous conversations that I have had with Bloomington residents on this issue, I will be wholeheartedly supporting this ordinance and voting yes on banning conversion therapy for children and vulnerable adults in Bloomington. And I personally feel it is unconscionable to think that we could know this information and allow it to continue to happen in our community. So I believe it's critical that we pass this ordinance for practical reasons, since we do have two practitioners practicing in Bloomington. But then we should pass it for symbolic reasons. You know, our role is to promote the health, safety, and welfare of residents, and I take that especially seriously for our youth and vulnerable adults. We say that we're committed to diversity, equity, inclusion. We say that we want Bloomington to be a welcoming community, including for those who are LGBTQ and their, and families and children who are LGBTQ. But we cannot just say those things. We can't just show up at the Pride Festival once a year. We have to take meaningful action, and that's what we're being asked to do here tonight. And so we know, you know, we know that our residents are watching. We know our LGBTQ neighbors are watching, parents of children who are transgender and gender not conforming, allies of the LGBTQ community. They want to, they want to see that we really do take action that matches what we say. And so again, I will be supporting this wholeheartedly and look forward to voting yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll be brief here. I do also want to start off with a huge thank you to the Human Rights Commission, to our legal staff, who obviously have been doing a ton of research on this, and all the folks that have reached out to me by phone, by email, shared very personal, and a lot of times very painful stories. It takes a ton of courage to pick up the phone and not only call your council member, but call your council member to share some of the stories folks have. I really admire that. As has been mentioned, I won't belabor the point, obviously, this is not prohibiting folks seeking religious counseling in a situation like this. It's not prohibiting folks finding a licensed therapist to kind of talk through their feelings and just better understand where they're at. And I think a lot of times when folks, and even tonight, we heard it quite a bit, that the fuzzy language around therapy and religious freedom, let's just be perfectly clear, what this ordinance does prohibit is a parent who's uncomfortable with their child being transgender, gay, lesbian, uncomfortable with their child's sexuality, taking them to someone who promises they can medically force them to be heterosexual. That's what this ordinance does prohibit, and that is the frame of reference I keep bringing myself back to. One of the callers tonight said, we are doctors. And that's absolutely true. We are doctors. We should trust the experts. And we've seen six, eight times tonight and dozens of times in the months previously, all of the experts, all of the doctors, say that conversion therapy is medically bunk and can be functionally dangerous for vulnerable kids that really need support. Another caller tonight had mentioned that we represent more than just the LGBT people in town. And that's absolutely true. We represent almost 90,000 folks of all backgrounds, all persuasions, all abilities that can make up Bloomington. And if I'm presented with overwhelming evidence that any of them are being subjected to medically discredited procedures, they're putting them at risk for potentially lifelong harm, procedures that could make them 40% more likely to seriously hurt themselves over the course of their life, you can bet I'm going to address it. So I appreciate folks' passion around this. I think it's important to keep in mind what this ordinance actually does. And if folks have a problem with me trying to look out for everybody in this community, I look forward to running it past our neighbors to fall.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, one of our residents, or one of the folks who called in, Megan, said, leading with love. I like that. That's meaningful in the times that we live in. You know, one of my concerns that I've had with this has always been that that this doesn't necessarily impact other cities, and people could move around and go to other cities. You know, I'm not a state legislator, pretend to be one. But, you know, I do think that when we look at this, that, you know, really, honestly, this should be, in one sense, a state and a county level. But our state legislators haven't taken this up. They haven't been able to get this one across the across the goal line here. And so we're going to have that opportunity to do that today. And why should we do that? Because we say that we're a welcoming city. We believe in equity and inclusion. That's part of our principles that we put forward. And so this fits into that quite well. So as we look forward to this, then the question that we should ask ourselves is, what's the evidence? Well, the Human Rights Commission, along with a number of other folks, have put forward the evidence there. And this one's clear. There's no doubt about it in terms of the evidence that was presented, and they spent a lot of time working on this. And certainly those folks who have opposing points of view, you know, they certainly have their work cut out for them because the evidence, the preponderance of the evidence is there, and it's really where we need to be at. One of the other callers said that, you know, we are not, you know, we don't have PhDs behind our name. But I will remind the public that we are a public health board. This is a public health issue. And so this is germane for us to be able to look into this. And so with that being said, I want to thank Councilmember Coulter for really having the guts to bring this forward. As the President would say, this is a big deal. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to, I'm afraid, repeat what's already been said by a number of people, so bear with me if you would. Councilmember Lohman just said this is important. It's a big deal. It's a public health issue, and I agree with that. Earlier, it was said that we have the seven pillars that we're guided by, and that this certainly falls within those seven pillars, and I concur with that. And lastly, Councilmember Carter said that if we really believe in this, we'll pass it. And that's where I have a bit of problem. And my trouble is, is that if it's a toothless ordinance, if we do use the terms that we've used in the past to characterize this as abuse, as cruelty, and I believe those are appropriate terms, and then yet say that there's a maximum of a $2,000 fine for committing those offenses? That's where I have a real injustice issue, to say that we're not pairing things appropriately. And because of that, my reading is, is that you, my colleagues on council, are are, uh, going to pass this and, uh, uh, pass it with, uh, uh, the minimal civil penalties. And, and that is exceedingly troubling to me. It doesn't meet my standards. It doesn't, uh, match what I think is appropriate for this kind of thing. Uh, it's interesting that, uh, in Minnesota, if you drive without a license, just driving a car without a license, that's a misdemeanor. It's a misdemeanor, and we're not treating this issue with the seriousness it warrants and deserves. And because my conclusion is, is that the majority of my colleagues have, uh, mentioned at prior meetings that they very strongly believe that, uh, the civil process is the one to use, I cannot, and I, I feel, um, uh, extremely badly that I am not able then to support, uh, the prohibition of it because of the lack of penalties. So, um, I will not support this, and, uh, thank you for the time.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, I wanted to, um, you know, wait sort of till the end and, and give folks an, an opportunity to, to speak to this a bit. And I wanted to start off by sincerely thanking everyone who has participated in this entire process, and I do mean that, folks who oppose this ordinance and folks who support it. This issue is really deeply personal in a way that very few things the City Council does are. And it can be really intimidating to be vulnerable on something like this. So, even though I don't agree with everyone, I do appreciate that folks are willing to do that. And, you know, I, I, a lot has already been said, um, but I think we just, again, we need to be extremely clear about what we're talking about. Specifically, what conversion therapy is, and just important, just as importantly, excuse me, what it is not. And in, Mr. Zuniga did a really good job of walking through this. But the definition in the ordinance states very clearly that conversion therapy seeks to change an individual's sexual orientation or gender identity. The definition goes on to say that conversion therapy is not mental health services that facilitate an individual's acceptance, support, understanding, and identity exploration and development, or address unlawful conduct or unsafe sexual practices. And I, I just, we need to be crystal clear. Conversion therapy seeks to change, not confirm, not explore, or help understand, to change. And as obviously has al- has already been said, the ordinance specifically states that it does not apply to members of the, of the clergy or religious officials. To put a finer point on it, we are talking about using unsound science, what I referred to before as quackery, to attempt to change gay kids to make them straight, or transgender kids to make them cisgender. And I think it's worth pointing out that this conversation has never once been about forcing straight or cisgender kids to become LGBTQ. And the fact that it hasn't speaks volumes about what we're really talking about. And, you know, and other folks have spoken to this. There has been a lot of confusion, and I would say even misinformation on this. I'm gonna try and spell it out, spell it out as clearly as I can. Working with a therapist or psychiatrist to understand or explore sexual orientation or gender identity issues is not conversion therapy. Having a conversation with your priest, pastor, rabbi, or Imam about morality or faith teachings around sexuality is not conversion therapy. What it is, is quackery. There is no scientifically verified or standardized accredited training for conversion therapy. Has anyone we've heard from either here tonight or in the past few weeks brought forward any scientific evidence in favor of it? Has anyone stated with certainty that it's medically sound? Has anyone put forward any psychological basis for performing it? Not that I've heard. It is damaging, dangerous, and discredited. And I should point out that that last term was used by the Star Tribune writing about this very ordinance. And I, you know, that, that distinction is really, really important. Because when we look at the entirety of the evidence, when we look at everyone's experience, not just the anecdotal reports that we get, we get a very different picture. I know it can be in vogue to belittle science, but there are no fewer than 12 different academic studies done with real people that show that conversion therapy is ineffective and/or harmful. And I have the links to send you if you doubt me. And we saw, you know, that long, long list of professional organizations that reject conversion therapy. The American Medical Association actually specifically uses the word "condemns." And as was mentioned just last week, the Minnesota Chapter of the National Association of Social Workers issued a statement calling conversion therapy "harmful, unethical, and non-evidence-based." What it all comes down to is this. Conversion therapy is based on the idea that, at best, sexual orientation and gender identity is a choice that someone can make. And at worst, that being anything other than straight and cisgender is a mental disorder, a disease that should be cured. These are ideas that have not only been rejected for years, but are deeply dehumanizing. And that's what brings me to my last point. Every year that I've been on the City Council, and from my understanding, well, before that too, our mayor has declared June to be LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Bloomington. In doing so, we have put the name, and I would argue the spirit of the city of Bloomington, behind a statement that welcomes everyone, that affirms our LGBTQ neighbors, and says that they should be proud of who they are. I know several of us have even volunteered at the booth that the city has had at the Pride Festival in Loring Park. Conversion therapy goes against all of that. It sends the message under the guise of one of the most trusted relationships anyone can have, that who our LGBTQ neighbors are is wrong. And to be quite honest, if we can't pass this ordinance, I don't know how we can stand behind those words and support. It is normal to be lesbian. It is normal to be gay. It is normal to be bisexual. It is normal to be transgender. It is normal to be queer. It is normal to be you. I don't think I can sum it up any better than Dr. Andy Johnson, an Associate Professor of Psychology at Bethel University, hardly a left-wing think tank, who told us in an email just, sent just today, excuse me, "Legislation is needed to ban the practice of conversion therapy. This is not a matter of religion. This is a matter of putting an end to mental health malpractice."
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. Council, any additional discussion on this? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm gonna be su- super quick and to the point, um, 'cause everyone has spoken more eloquently than I could have anyways. But I, um, I, I support this, uh, prohibition. I support this conversion therapy ban. I support our LGBTQ community, um, and I support Bloomington being an inclusive community that welcomes all people and not only puts that up on a flag, but acts to, uh, make it a better community for everyone here. So, um, appreciate the efforts on this and, and, uh, um, yeah, thanks for the good work.
And I will echo those thanks to staff and to our legal staff and to all who have worked on this. And, uh, also echo the thanks to, that was mentioned earlier, to everyone who called in with an opinion and sharing the very personal stories and the emails that we received and the phone calls that I received. I know it's a personal issue to a lot of folks. It, it absolutely is. And I appreciate that, and I understand that, and I understand that on both sides. I really do, both pro and, and against. Uh, uh, without keeping this too long, because I, I think we are headed in a good direction here. When we first started the, this discussion, uh, back in, in January or even before, we, we brought this up, and we started talking about this. And when I would bring this up to people in the community, friends, folks that I would talk to, family members, the overwhelming response I get from so many people was, "Wait, that's still a thing? They still, we still do that here in Bloomington?" And I think one of the callers tonight said it best. Th- this is 2021. We shouldn't even be having this discussion. We should be so far past this and moving on with things that, that I, I think, um, are, are not exclusionary. They're not dangerous. They're not harmful to people. And, um, so I, I appreciate the comments of all of my councilmember colleagues and, uh, everyone who called in. Council, any additional questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve Sections 1, 2, and 3 of City Ordinance to amend Chapter 12 of the City Code, prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy on minors and vulnerable adults within the city limits, and establishing enforcement and penalties for violations. Hearing no further discussion? Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
May.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Proudly, aye.
Lowman? Councilmember Lowman?
Aye.
Thank you. Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 6-1 with Beloga in the negative. And then the second part about this is the, uh, the enforcement activities that were discussed. We got, uh, information, we heard information from our city legal staff, and the recommendation by city staff is to go with Option A, which would, uh, let me see, with all my notes here, if I can find it again. The, uh, prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy on minors and establishing enforcement, uh, and the enforcement would be to make it a civil fine, a civil penalty, $500 for the first offense, $1,000 for the second offense. As I said earlier, I think we'd need to have that conversation ultimately here. We need to figure out, um, the, the, the ultimate, uh, the ultimate, uh, enforcement possibilities, not only in this, but in, in the rest of our city enforcement activities. But, um, the staff is, is recommending that we work off of Option A. We start with Option A. And, um, with that, I would, uh, I would actually move to approve Sections 4 and 5 of the ordinance, amending Chapter 12 of the City Code prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy on minors and vulnerable adults within the city limits, and establishing enforcement and penalties for violations. In essence, I just moved Option A for the administrative offenses and civil penalties.
Second, Coulter.
We have a motion and a second regarding Option A. Council, discussion regarding that? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, you know, I, I don't disagree with Councilmember Beloga in that the 500 and the 1,000 seems, um, like not a strong enough, um, penalty. I, I'm fully supportive of Option A. Um, and i- it is a little concerning that we have a maximum of $2,000 for the fines or penalties that one entity can, can accrue, um, or occur. You know, I just, so I'm wondering if we move forward with this ordinance with Option A tonight, I should say, what is that, what does that look like moving forward to, to look at, um, that, how that applies across our city, but then specifically to this pop, this ordinance too, that, that limit of $2,000?
Well, I, I will say, Council-
That could be, that, oh, sorry, I didn't say that. That could be an ongoing conversation too, but I just wanna make sure that we have concrete actions that we'll take from this meeting as it relates to that maximum, so that we can then, I, I guess I'm, I'm curious if we can retroactively then, or come back to this ordinance and apply those new, new fines if we were able to increase that $2,000.
The, uh, the information that I received from our legal folks is that, um, 1.13 Civil Fines, the Administrative Offenses detailed in 1.11 may be subject to a civil fine. The amount of a civil fine may not exceed the amount of the maximum fine allowed if each ordinance violation had been prosecuted as a misdemeanor. So it's, it's simply, it's written that way to tie our hands. Now, that's not saying we couldn't be rewritten if we wanted to move forward in that direction. Uh, Mr. Verbrugge, uh, as I look at this, this is, is this through Minnesota State Chapters, or is this?
Mayor?
Is this City Code or, or, um, under civil fines, or is this Minnesota law? You coward. Ms. Manderscheid.
Mayor members, um, I'd be happy to, uh, to respond to that. Yeah, Mayor, you are correct in that there, we do have a provision in our City Code, um, Section 1.13 that talks about, um, civil fines. It's within the larger chapter, Chapter 1, which, um, talks about this administrative, uh, hearing process that Peter, um, discussed earlier in his presentation. Um, there is language in there that, um, sets, um, a fine maximum for each ordinance violation. Um, so, um, we can certainly, um, you know, look into that. Uh, I'll note that it says for each ordinance violation. Um, we have a period of time that we're going to be, um, that we have several months until this ordinance is, uh, put in effect. Uh, we can do some additional research on the fine amounts. And if, um, if, uh, we need to come back, uh, and amend Section, uh, Chapter 1, um, if you pass the particular motion that's on the table, we'll be back to amend, uh, Chapter 1 to address the, the work that you've done tonight potentially, and we can roll that into, um, uh, we can roll that fine discussion into that part of the, um, sorry, I'm not being very eloquent after all of these hours. I'm sorry about that. I'll, uh, restate it one more time. Uh, uh, if you adopt Option A tonight, um, then we will need to go and, uh, do some editing in, uh, Chapter 1 of our City Code. Chapter 1 of our City Code is the section that's talking about administrative fines and includes the, uh, penalty amounts that are being referenced. So, um, if you'd like, um, we can certainly, uh, do some additional analysis and bring back that fine amount to you that's in Chapter 12 when we address the, um, language in Chapter 1 subsequently. Does that make sense? Sorry, I had to do that twice.
Councilmember Carter, does that make sense?
It does make sense. And I, I just wanna be clear. I definitely don't want it to hold up tonight's vote. It's more of, but, but that's not what I'm hearing you say. So, thank you for clarifying that and answering that question.
Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, what I would say about this is, uh, you know, this is, I think where Councilmember Beloga really has hit it well. Uh, when we originally saw this, uh, information that came before us, uh, they talked about, we talked about, uh, folks being abused and tortured. Um, you know, I'm, again, no state legislator. Um, uh, and so, I, I just went and outlooked, this may be an old copy of the Minnesota statutes, but the torture definition is, uh, means the intentional infliction of extreme mental anguish or extreme psychological or physical abuse when committed in an exceptionally depraved manner. And when I think about that, and I think about the $500 fine, uh, and, and the folks that I know that, that have been in the military and the people that have been in my life that have been, uh, tortured, that just does not, that, that amount of money just does not make a lot of sense. And I, uh, then I turned to the, uh, the criminal, uh, phase of things. And I think that the point is well been made about in terms of the reporting piece. Uh, this reporting piece, uh, you know, when you go through that criminal phase, uh, you know, that would, uh, prevent folks from wanting to report that they're experiencing this. But it's not about the reporting part about it. For me, from a moral standpoint, it's about the abuse and the torture that these folks are experiencing. It's unfortunate that our, uh, system is set up the way that it is in terms of how it deals with, uh, uh, those minors and, uh, vulnerable adults, uh, in our state. Uh, like I said before, I'm not a state legislator, but in these times that we're living in, uh, I just morally cannot support a 500, $2,000 fine for torture or abuse. Um, I cannot do that. I will not do that. And so, what I would say is maybe we need to add this to our, our legislative agenda in terms of looking at ways in which to protect our vulnerable adults, um, and all the people in Bloomington, uh, in a, in terms of these criminal, uh, uh, where, it's where I believe this belongs, uh, is in the criminal, uh, phase of things. Folks losing their licenses, uh, folks going to jail. Uh, we've got these two, uh, practitioners that are out there. I wanna make sure that they cannot practice this, uh, uh, as Councilmember Beloga. We gotta get tough, uh, with these folks if we really wanna be a welcoming community. So I cannot support, uh, this part of it. I understand in terms of the reporting part, it just doesn't make sense, uh, to, to put folks through there. I hope there's enough of a majority of folks that we can get the reporting piece done. Uh, but I, I'm looking for the long-term, uh, solution. Uh, when we see folks getting tortured, um, uh, in our state, I think that's unacceptable. And I've gotta stand, uh, for those moral beliefs, uh- And I've got to stand for those moral beliefs that I have and for our folks in Bloomington who are, I like this. Certainly, I hope that we get this fine up higher than this, but this is just not enough. We need to criminally go after these folks. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Zuniga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman. I would just like to draw your attention to Clause G within the enforcement and penalties provision. I believe you are citing to a current criminal statute within Minnesota State statute. We added this provision to address the similar, the exact concern that you were discussing, which the fact that we have this ordinance does not prohibit or limit the city or anyone else from other available either criminal or civil actions or laws. And so, if there was a violation of current criminal code, you know, the city still would have that ability to go after a license provider under current criminal code.
Yes, I don't understand what you're talking about. Help me understand that, because to me, it sounds like we've got two fines here and that's it, you're done.
If you look at the, Councilmember Loman, if you look at the Item G in Section 12.14, it says, notwithstanding any law or ordinance to the contrary, this article does not prohibit or preclude any of other available legal remedies for a violation of the law, including without limitation criminal or civil actions. And so, that provision within the ordinance was added, I think specifically to address the current, the concern that you just expressed, that if there is a violation of other criminal laws, this ordinance doesn't, does not prohibit the city from investigating and/or prosecuting under those other criminal laws.
What I'm hearing you saying is that this in and of itself is not a violation of a crime.
Councilmember Loman, it would not be a violation under the ordinance, but it does not preclude violation of other criminal laws.
Yeah, I know, and I'm glad you asked for that clarification. What I'm saying is this in and of itself would be a violation of the law. That's why I can't support this. So if I wasn't clear about that, I want this particular violation to be criminalized. So, I understand what staff is trying to do, if there's something else that's around there that we could do that, but I'm saying that this practice in and of itself, by practicing conversion therapy, that should be criminal. So if that's not what that is saying in G, that's the way I read it, was that G doesn't cover that, we're gonna cover that through $500 or a $1,000 fine.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Zuniga, what I heard you say in response to Councilmember Loman is, is that if you found other criminal activity while looking at conversion therapy, then you might prosecute that other action if it elevated to the level of a misdemeanor or beyond. Did I understand that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, that is correct.
And that's the absolute reason why I can't, you know, didn't support the vote earlier and cannot, because if we're abusing and torturing children in the city of Bloomington, we don't have any other more precious resource. And to say that it's a $500 fine and go off and do it again and pay the maximum fine and be absolved, you'll actually have immunity after that. You know, it just doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't seem to align with the values that the city espouses, and it certainly doesn't align with my personal values. Thanks for the clarification.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just kind of along the same lines here. What other crimes might come into play here? I mean, we've talked about this torture and things like that, but, I mean, realistically, does that provide a path for a civil remedy? And if an individual who's been subjected to conversion therapy is willing, able to testify and bring forth evidence of a crime as defined by state law, that they would have that pathway, would we be able to be in a position to help them with that? I mean, is that, is the intent of that to sort of open up that dual track there and give a little bit of control to someone who's been subjected to this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I think it does open up the possibility of dual tracks. I'll defer to Ms. Murphy on what other potential crimes may be looked at.
Ms. Murphy, are you still with us?
I am. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The types of crimes that would still be able to be investigated and possibly referred could range from child neglect, child endangerment, and these are all fact specifics and investigation-driven as to what sort of information is presented to the police. But there could be, depending on if there is physical harm or there is evidence of psychological harm, you could certainly refer cases for assault, domestic violence, like I said, endangerment of a child, neglect of a child. You're not precluded by having law enforcement investigate those crimes. As Mr. Zuniga, sorry, Zuniga said, we're leaving, there's nothing in this ordinance that would preclude further investigation into that. So those are the types of investigations that we're talking about. And those are the types of offenses that could be, provided there's sufficient evidence, could be referred to the Hennepin County Attorney's Office for charging. Except for a misdemeanor-level domestic violence case, that is something that we would handle at the city attorney level. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes, it does. I appreciate that clarification. I appreciate that pathway is there. I mean, what I have heard through the testimony and things is that there's a great concern within the LGBTQ community about having criminal process that they'd have to go through. You described that very well earlier in the meeting, probably three hours ago at this point. And, you know, so I like that that is there still. If it makes sense, if the facts merit it, if the victim of this is in a position to go through that. But I also like that we have something here that, at least as a starting point in terms of Option A, it's what those people that have researched this have recommended. I will support it this time with the caveat that I would like to look at that cap of the 2,000 and, you know, how exactly that applies. I do think that's something to work on. You know, ultimately, as I've said before, I think the goal is to strongly encourage the practitioners of this to discontinue it and to use either reputable scientifically evidence-based practices that are helpful for people that need therapy, or, you know, find a different line of work if you're not able to do something in a way that all medical associations seem to find. If you feel the need to do something that is contrary to the opinion of all medical organizations, you know, that is something we want to see stop, and I'd rather prevent this and have an ordinance that does that than not. And so, I'll support A at this point and appreciate that there's that criminal path that's available for those that may want to take it.
Agreed, there is a criminal path, and I also agree, I think we have agreement that we want to take a second look at our civil fines and that schedule in the very near future. So we'll probably get that on a work plan before too long here. Counsel, additional comments or questions regarding the motion that is on the table right now? Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Loman?
Thanks for that close clarifying questions there. Councilmember Nelson, I just wanted to make a comment that I'm still not going to support today. Fines are too low, but once we start looking at those fines, I'm glad to hear that there are different things we could bring forward. My preference would be that this itself could be brought forward as a criminal offense as well. But as these fines, $500,000, talking about torture, I just can't, I can't support this right, as it's written right now. But once we get those civil fines up, I could reconsider. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about just some of the concerns that others on council have elevated. And, you know, I don't think that the issue that is being brought up here around the criminal versus the civil, I mean, the criminal justice system doesn't work for survivors every single day because of the reasons that were stated earlier. I think it's something like 70% to 80% of survivors don't report their assaults to police because they don't want to experience that re-traumatization. So, until the broader system is fixed, I mean, our ordinance is not going to fix that system, and we can't do nothing until that system is fixed. And so, so I, you know, I admittedly was, you know, definitely willing to think through the criminal piece just because, of course, I want to throw the book at people who are treating children and vulnerable adults like this. But when you actually start to dig in and listen to survivors and listen to experts who work with survivors and look at the data around people who experience sexual violence and their experience with the criminal justice system, it is really humbling. It is really humbling. And so, I, again, I fully support Option A. I think we've got to go the civil route. I appreciate that there's still a path to criminal if there are other things that are concerning, and that I 100% think that these fines need to be higher. But I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything additional? Chris, could you give me a quick scroll up and down to make sure that I'm not missing anybody? Does not look like it. So Counsel, there is a motion and a second on the table to approve Sections 4 and 5 of the ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the City Code, prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy on minors and vulnerable adults within the city limits and establishing enforcement and penalties for violations. Do we have any additional comments, questions on this, on the motion? Hearing none? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga? Councilmember Beloga?
I'm sorry, May.
Thank you. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
No.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 5-2 with Councilmembers Loman and Beloga in the negative. Well, thank you very much to everyone for that. I mean, it was a good discussion, it was a lengthy piece, and it was an important discussion, I think, that we had to have, and it's an important bit of work that we had to do. And so, I appreciate staff's work on it. As I said, I appreciate the input from the community. The Human Rights Commission, thank you so very much. Chair Bosu, Commissioner Smithson, appreciate your being here. Mr. Zuniga, thank you for your work. I know a lot of work went into that. And doubling back to somebody's comment earlier, thank you to Councilmember Coulter who kind of pushed us on this and brought us forward on this, so thank you so very much. So, well done to all involved. Before we dive further into our agenda, I would like to make some, do some agenda gymnastics if I could to try and figure out exactly how we can manage this now that we are right after 10 o'clock. Here's what I'm going to suggest, if at all possible. Because of the public financing issues around 7.2 and 7.3, 8012 Old Cedar Avenue, we need to work on it, we need to get that done tonight, we need to keep that moving. So I do want to continue, keep that moving. Item 7.4, our public hearing on adoption by reference ordinance, I would like to continue that until next week to 4/26. Like to keep our Item 7.5 on the agenda. 7.6, I think we're going to continue anyway regarding the landscape and tree preservation updates. And then 7.7, the public hearing on malt liquor license at Highland Green Golf Course. The course is open, and I would like to get that taken care of if at all possible as well. And then we could even continue Item 8.1, the earned, sick, and safe leave process for developing the ordinance, as that will be, that's a discussion item, that's a study item anyway, so we can move that to a later date.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, 8.2 can also be deferred as well.
Differing 8.2?
Legislative update, yeah. And one, rather than do that as a motion, Mr. Mayor, perhaps if the council consents to that plan, that we would wait until 7.4 comes up and then just open the public hearing and continue it to April 26?
Okay.
Okay? And then that's, that should be sufficient. And the other items, again, we will get rescheduled as soon as possible.
Very good.
Which is probably next week.
All right. And I think it's entirely possible, 7.2 is not, I mean, there's some meat there, we might have to talk about this. It's entirely possible, folks, we're gonna have to go past 11 o'clock. As we get closer to 11, if that looks to be the case, I'll look for a motion to extend the meeting as long as we would need to. Hopefully, we can get it done before too long after 11 o'clock. But I just want to make sure that we get our work done, because we have a lot of work to get done for a variety of different reasons.
Mayor, before we move on to the additional items, can we do the summary publication resolution for 7.1, please?
Thank you so very much. I forgot the summary publication for Item 7.2 and, 7.1, excuse me, 7.1. So I would move summary publication regarding the ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the City Code, prohibiting the practice of conversion therapy on minors and vulnerable adults within the city limits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for summary publication on Item 7.1. My apologies, thanks for catching that, Ms. Manderscheid, appreciate that. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Again, thank you for catching that, Ms. Manderscheid, appreciate that. So with that, let's move on to Item 7.2, which is another public hearing regarding the redevelopment of 8012 Old Cedar Avenue and 1800 East 80th Street. Mr. Johnson from our planning department has stuck it out until this late hour before we even get going here, and I appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Mr. Johnson, please.
Thanks for having me, Mayor, and good evening to the mayor and all the members of the council. I will share a PowerPoint presentation. I will try and be concise in the presentation as best I can. Can you hear me okay, first of all?
Yes, we can, and we can see your screen, and we are golden to go.
Great, okay. Reuter Walton Development has submitted this application before you this evening. Their architect and representative is on the call, I believe, as well. Should there be any questions for the applicant? But there are four zoning actions they're asking you to consider this evening, and the application is for a four-story, 68-unit apartment building that does have components of affordability associated with it. Those are the four applications, just digging into them. The comp plan amendment, office to high-density residential, the rezoning, FD2 to RM50 PV, the preliminary and final development plans for the project, as well as a plating action. There's two parcels, unplanted lots associated with this site. The project location or site is located across Highway 77 from IKEA in the Mall of America area. So this is just south of American Boulevard on Old Cedar Avenue at East Adia Street. You can see that sliver parcel on the south. There is a medical office to the north, standard office to the south, some fourplexes and other high-density residential to the west, and some other office and hotels in the surrounding area. This is the existing condition, there's a two-story office building on the site that would be demolished should the development application be approved. Again, just a street view shot of the site, it's a relatively flat site. And just to note that it is on the- It's a relatively flat site, and just to note that it is on the Nicomus Minnesota River Regional Bike Trail, so you see that in the foreground there. In terms of background, there's been a number of actions along the way that city council may have been informed or taken action on. This project was awarded an $11 million award from Minnesota Housing for this project. That is a competitive financing process, so that is very significant. And when we talk about the unit types and levels of affordability associated with this project, a lot of it is possible through the award of this $11 million bonds from Minnesota Housing. And so, that was done in January 2021. The challenge or the stipulation of that award through that competitive process is that they have to obtain a building permit by early July. And so, when we're talking about a project like this, that certainly is a compressed, with the entitlements associated with it, that is a fairly compressed timeline. In March of 2021, the city council did approve amendments to the opportunity housing ordinance that did add and revise some tools and incentives that are being utilized in this application, so we'll talk about those. The application is seeking TIP funding. I believe that pertains to item 7.3 on your agenda. And just to note, the planning commission did hold a public hearing on this project on April the 9th, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the project following discussion. Getting to the unit mix itself, so the, the project is fully affordable. All 68 units proposed with this project have some level of affordability. Six of the project units would need that 30%, that challenging to find 30% lane, and so they do have 9% of their units at the 30% level. They are providing eight units at 50%, and the remainder of the units would be at the 60% area median income level. The chart below, I won't touch on the numbers, but just provides you some monthly rents associated with those levels of affordability by bedroom type. Just getting to another slide about unit mix, the majority of the beds, of the units are one- and two-bedroom units. There are 12 three-bedroom units, so certainly more accommodated into families on that spectrum. And then, the table on the lower side of the, the slide just shows the types of units by affordability, so hopefully that makes sense. Getting to the tools and incentives this application is seeking your approval on, they are utilizing the density bonus tool, the site area reduction tool, which was added in the recent amendments, the site width reduction, similar to the site area also in the amendments, the open space reduction tool, so again, in the revised ordinance, the parking reduction tool, the enclosed parking space conversion tool, there was some revisions to that as well, alternative exterior materials, and residential storage. And so, when we'll talk about these OHO tools as they pertain to the various requirements of the zoning code, this project does require for that 30% AMI lane, so the, the, not, not the very highest possibility on some of the tools and incentives, but one of the more, not aggressive, but the greater reductions associated with the tools and incentives. So, the application does include a comp plan amendment from office to high-density residential, as well as a request to rezone the site. I'll, I'll talk about these in concert, just to compress them, because the analysis, when we looked at a comprehensive plan amendment, as well as a rezoning, touches on many of the similar components or factors. This site does have immediate access to a major collector road. Old Cedar is a collector roadway in the city's functional classification. This site does have proximity to all-day mass transit or high-frequency mass transit. It's within a quarter mile of a bus stop that provides all-day service, as well as is on the route for the D-line, the BRT D-line that is currently under construction, which goes to downtown. And certainly, you're in close proximity to the Mall of America, which, of course, offers a wide variety of transit service there as well. And so, with respect to the comp plan amendment, those are the kind of locational or site criteria that the comp plan specifies for the high-density residential district, which is all residential uses above 10 units, a density of 10 units per acre. And this project is 57 units an acre, so it would fall under that high-density category. So, it meets the locational criteria, and then with respect to the comp plan, what we also look like, look at is, does this project support or further other identified goals in the comprehensive plan? And certainly, this project creates additional housing supply. It also increases housing variety within the city of Bloomington, and then, and chiefly and most importantly, does have a significant or strong public benefits argument with respect to the provision of affordable housing, which is a key goal of the housing element, as well as city council strategic goals of the past as well. So, in addition to those elements that we look at with comprehensive plan, we look at those same elements for a rezoning request. The other things we look at with, that are specific to the RM50 zoning district have to do with proximity also to employment and service opportunities. This is a fairly high jobs number, not only with the Mall of America being three-quarters of a mile to the east by foot, but also, also, the American Boulevard corridor into itself has a wide variety of employment opportunities, both in hospitality and other industrial and other types of land uses. So, there's a lot of businesses in the American Boulevard corridor, in addition to retail services to the west and to the east as well. So, it checks both of those criteria in the judgment of staff and the planning commission. And then, finally, we also look at access to open space. And so, the closest public park that the site would be served by is Wright's Lake Park, which is a half a mile to the south along Old Cedar. That's the most significant park in close proximity to this site, which has a water feature, ball fields, open space, other parks amenities to the south. So, and then, again, just looking at the public benefits argument, there should be a public benefit or impetus for any zoning change, and with the same logic applies that we, that I discussed about the comp plan change applies to the rezoning as well. So, planning commission is recommending approval of both of those changes for this site. Get into the site plan itself, the thing that maybe jumps out first is that the, the building itself fronts fairly closely on East Eightieth Street and is also pushed a little bit to the east towards Old Cedar, and they are seeking PD flexibility on some of those setbacks, and I'll, I'll bring up a slide that kind of goes into that in a little bit deeper detail. But so, the building frames East Eightieth, it's a L-shaped footprint with underground parking garage. They do have 33 surface parking stalls on the north side of the site, and then they have a curved driveway leading down to the underground parking garage. The entry has, the main entrance would be on the north side of the building with a plaza or patio, and they are proposing to construct a new sidewalk along East Eightieth Street as city code would require, and there's a secondary entrance to the building on the west side of the building. Again, this is a four-story apartment building. Get into some of the renderings that the architect provided. The building material is fairly similar to what you would see or common amongst, you know, this era of development for residential. There's some metal panel, there's brick, there's glass, and there, in selected elevations, there is some fiber cement, which is permitted as on non-street-facing, to be a kind of a larger proportion of material on non-street-facing elevations. So, certainly an attractive building via these renderings and utilizing some nice materials. Again, kind of the variation of the different types of metal panel do break up the, the building massing. Get into the floor plan itself, this certainly fairly common for apartments, and most of the amenity spaces are on the ground level. So, you have fitness, community room, mail, office, a computer lab with study space, which is nice, and again, a variety of different unit types. They are proposing 10 residential storage units on each floor available to residents. So, they are seeking a minor reduction in residential storage, not even, not up to the 75% that their incentive would allow. So, that is a nice feature in this floor plan as they put forth. They did provide a shadow study, as our city code would require whenever there's a potential for a building to cast shadows on another adjacent residential building, we have them prepare a shadow study. This shows some modest shadow impacts to the residential uses to the west in the morning time. Just to keep in mind, our city code prohibits a building that would cast shadows, both AM and PM, so this does not do that. It is compliant with those standards. Otherwise, the building is, it doesn't violate any of the other height standards of the city. It's within the height restrictions around 50 feet in height. The one other thing I'll say about height is that typical of development in this area, staff would recommend that they provide an FAA no-hazard determination, not for the building itself, but for any construction crane should the project go forward. And that's just a, a thing that we require just to ensure that the, that MSP is aware and that it meets FAA's criteria for safety. Get into the parking for the project. Again, this is maybe the most significant OHO reduction or tool or incentive being utilized. Again, this is the first project that has achieved that 9% of the 30% AMI lane, so they are eligible for a 40% overall parking reduction. They are taking advantage of that for the total parking quantity. You can see the standard parking requirement of our parking ordinance would be 149 spaces. The reduction would drop them to 89 parking spaces, and so, and that's what they've delivered to you here with this site plan is 89 stalls on the nose. They are eligible for a larger underground or enclosed parking reduction, but just given the dynamics of the site plan, they are providing most of their parking in the underground garage. Just to note about the, the site and the area, there is some parking restrictions on some of the adjacent roadways. And so, for that reason, and given the, the parking reduction, staff is recommending and planning commission supported this condition, that a parking management plan be provided, and the things, the content that we would like to see in that plan is assurances that surface parking north of the building would not be utilized for snow storage, number one, at any time, and B, that the operator and management company, whoever manages this property, is very thoughtful in terms of their vehicle registration system and how to address visitor and guest parking in this area. Again, just considering the, the level of incentive or tool being considered here, the operator has to be thoughtful about these things. We'd like them to be on the record about that. In addition, you know, should there ever be the instances of, or occurrence of inadequate parking, just to note that there is a lot of opportunities for shared parking in the area, but certainly, that would be incumbent between private parties to come to that type of arrangement. And the reason I mention that is that some of the surrounding uses are office in nature, which do present typically a good opportunity for shared parking. But again, that, that would be up to the private entities to pursue that, should it be needed. Getting to the usable open space, Cas Wilson provided you this exhibit showing their usable open space. They are shy, they are requesting a 50% reduction. So, in addition to total parking quantity, they are requesting the maximum reduction in usable open space. They are a little bit short as of right now currently. They have been working with staff, and at the planning commission stated they will resolve this by providing a certain amount of balconies. Under the city code, there is a balcony bonus to, to provide for usable open space. So, just to note that they are going to bring forward a project that meets a 50% requirement. They would not be shy. That's not additional flexibility they are seeking. It just happened to be some changing dynamics of the project. When it was first submitted, there was some consideration for a rooftop patio that, that did get removed from the project, so they're looking at ways to utilize the city code to achieve that 50% level. Just circling back to this issue, sorry, not to advance quickly, but there was some discussion at the planning commission, and there has been some discussion on the part of the applicant with staff about the potential to look at possible locations for any kind of child play area or tot lot at this site. Some of those discussions are progressing. There may be some opportunities, so if there's questions about that, we certainly can dive into that a little further. In terms of the PD deviations being provided here, the main PD-related deviations that we're considering with this application has to do with principal building setbacks. And again, it's this, this reduced building setback along East Eightieth Street. They are providing a 11-foot building setback along the majority of the expanse of the building. It does jut out to 10 feet at certain, at the end caps, if you will, of that southern elevation. And then, again, there would be a reduced building elevation for those southern balconies that they would install. And so, you know, certainly, when we look at the need for the deviation, there is, the deviation is really, what it's achieving is providing enough adequate area for surface parking and circulation down into that underground parking garage. You know, the unit widths and the hallways and corridors, those things seem to be fairly fixed, or, you know, you can't gain a lot by shrinking those down, and you've got units loaded on both sides of the corridor. So, some of this is just to provide adequate entrance area and surface parking, and then again, to navigate down into the underground parking garage. As planners often kind of present this design perspective, you know, there's an element of reduced building setback that, you know, planners and other folks find attractive in terms of framing the street and activating the street. Certainly, those balconies would also add eyes on the street and provide some activation. Given, given that these reduced setbacks are not directly impacting any adjoining properties, we are supportive of them. Planning commission was supportive of these deviations as shown. Just to note that pushing the building closer to Old Cedar on the east side of the site also moves the building further away from the four-plexes to the west, and they are showing a increased setback above and beyond what city code require. So, I think that that's helpful as well. Other miscellaneous PD deviations this application would include, would include a reduced parking setback along Old Cedar. Associated landscape yards would be reduced in order to accommodate parking and building setbacks. And then, there's a retaining wall on the north side of the site that would be reduced in building setback from the typical principal building setback down to a technical, technically, where the back of the retaining wall goes is kind of the full engineered load of it to a four-foot setback. And the reason that we require principal building setbacks for retaining walls is that so that someone doesn't get a large structure or wall right up along their property line in addition to some of the stormwater erosion control challenges that can happen with the retaining wall. In this case, the wall slopes downward from the Alina site, and the Alina site is actually higher than the subject property, so it shouldn't present any visual obstruction to the Alina property. And, yeah, so we're supportive of that as well. So, th- this is a slide that's come up, I think, once before in your presentations, and certainly, we've had a lot of discussion in the past about PD flexibility, but looking at through the lens of OHO incentives and tools, it's kind of two different tests when it relates to what incentives and tools you support for a project and what PD flexibility you support. The OHO incentive test is a negative impacts test. What it states is that the tool or incentive will create a negative impact to the surrounding neighborhood, and that negative impact outweighs the positive benefits of the opportunity units created. So, not only does it have to create a negative impact, that impact has to outweigh the, the positive aspects or components of the project. And then, the PD flexibility test, you know, we look at requests for PD flexibility. That's certainly founded in the, the public benefit test, and certainly, there's certain things that can't be requested for PD flexibility, and that's outlined in that ordinance. But all the things they're requesting here do meet the criteria in terms of providing enhanced site design, and then, again, we'll, you know, as mentioned before, the level of affordable units being provided and the levels of affordability being met with the project provided a significant foundation or basis for public benefit in terms of the merits. Public benefits, just to get into the nitty-gritty of that, this project provides more affordable units than the OHO requirement, 68 affordable units versus if this were coming in at the minimum, certainly wouldn't be eligible for all the tools and incentives, of course, but it would, the minimum would only be six affordable units with a 68-unit project, and this project provides a deeper level of affordability than the OHO requirement. Again, the baseline being 60% of area median income. This project has six units at the 30% AMI category. And then uh, twelve percent of its units are affordable at fifty percent area median income. So that's uh, beneficial. And uh, as I mentioned before, with the conference of plan discussion, uh, this project doesn't advance housing element goals of increasing housing supply, variety and affordability. Terms of public correspondence, the city did receive a letter from MINDOT regarding uh, the proximity of the project to State Highway seventy-seven. Um, they do recommend that the architect, and we've had conversations with them about this, but um, you know, upgrade or address uh, the various windows and other building materials of the building to have a higher S T C rating in order to knock down any of that highway noise that uh, is coming from, generated from the east. Um, uh, in terms of airport noise, it's not within the noise contour area that would require it under our ordinance. Um, but they should still look at that. Um, no other public testimony was received uh, with this project. And uh, I would add that no testimony uh, was received at the planning commission public hearing other than uh, brief comments by the applicant. So staff is recommending approval of this project. Uh, should that be uh, the direction? There's five motions uh, that would need to be made in order to uh, advance the project. And I have those available to you, uh, should you want to make use of them. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council questions of Mr. Johnson on the presentation and all the information provided here in the presentation, but also in the packet as well in our past discussions. Chris, can you scroll up and down for me really quick? Councilmember Nelson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick technical questions maybe here. Um, uh, the um, the MINDOT thing that you just sent up there, there was a a concern that they had raised in terms of timeline. Are there any concerns that they'll be able to um, provide the approval that they need to provide in time to get that permit?
Mr. Johnson? Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, thanks for that question. So they don't have to provide a, a formal uh, approval per se um, on the project. Um, MINDOT, they just had some questions about uh, the truncated domes and then the noise issue. Um, if there was a comment about uh, timing, I, maybe I'm a little bit confused. Um, I can certainly open that letter again and take a look at it. But they, but for the record, I, I don't believe they have any formal uh, approval jurisdiction with respect to issuance of the building permits uh, in this case. They more make reference to those noise standards and state statute as a, a point of uh, being on the record about that.
Okay, um, I'll just trust that you're on top of that. And if there's something that needs to get done, it'll, it'll get done there. I'd um, in terms of the noise standards, and this is more just sort of my memory thing, but don't we have some additional noise standards related to highway noise? And does that apply here?
Yeah, yeah, Councilmember Nelson, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, sorry to interject. Um, the uh, the standards that the city adopted specifically focus on airport noise. Uh, so ultimately, I believe there was a discussion when that ordinance was adopted, whether or not to include highway and uh, the route. It did not go that route um, ultimately, uh, but we do have standards for airport noise. And it's based on the kind of evolving noise contours. They do a study every other year, I believe, at MSP to kind of develop where those noise contours are. And this site would not be within that boundary. And that's kind of the binding uh, issue in the, within the ordinance.
All right. Thank you for that information. That seems like a memory problem on my end. So um, and just a quick note, I did find the page here. It says, please remember that MINDOT has a thirty day, has thirty days to review developments that are adjacent and or may affect MINDOT maintained highways. Please factor this time into the city review and permitting process.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Yep, we certainly, uh, should the project move forward, uh, uh, there'd be more than adequate time to, to do additional review on their part. Um, and I think part of those timelines can run concurrent uh, seeking Met Council approval on the conference of plan amendment and other elements of the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question uh, related to fire. If I'm looking at the plan correctly, I, I think it's still on the screen here. Um, can you explain to me, I mean, is this fully compliant with what we're looking for from a fire protection standpoint? How do we get a, an apparatus in and out of that? I know at other places we've had um, secondary exits so that you didn't have to back up the, um, that type of stuff, I guess. Can you help me understand this plan?
Yeah, Mayor, Member Nelson, uh, thanks for that question. And I don't pretend to be a, a fire marshal or a fire professional. And Laura does a great job and I respect her uh, for how she works on these kind of projects. Um, one of the, one of the issues at bay here is that, uh, I mean, I think as you see with the reductions in parking and um, open space, it just happens to be a fairly uh, constrained site uh, for, you know, a larger development. And so one of the issues that was running into is that how do you provide that fire access in a way uh, that also maintains the affordable units, but also maintains some semblance of what little open space and uh, you know, not having the whole site be impervious surface. So that's, that's an issue that they have to contend with. And uh, you know, the, the fire code is a little bit different. Uh, it's more similar to the building code in that the fire marshal has more discretion of how, you know, what to require and where. And so I think uh, this might be one of those occupancies or situations where there is uh, it's not a, in other words, it's more of a judgment call on the part of the fire marshal. Um, but that being said, so the, the fire access is somewhat limited. It's a short run. So the, in theory, if they had to respond to a call on the north side of this building, uh, they would potentially have to do some backup movements. Um, but uh, because of the, the lack of access, the, the fire code does require that additional equipment or more responsive fire suppression systems be provided within the building. And so the fire marshal is requiring that. I believe they're called automatic wet stand pipes in all the stairwells. And I think that that's a higher level of uh, you know, infrastructure within the building uh, than what is typical. And they're requiring that as a, as a in connection or related to the access.
Okay, good. Thank you. That is one of my concern with uh, this type of residential property, making sure it's safe. Um, uh, last area of question I had, you'd mentioned that uh, they're looking at using balconies potentially for um, open space, quote unquote. Um, uh, two parts to that. One, I assume that those balconies are not like balconies on a unit, but they're balconies that are open and available to any of the residents uh, to use. Um, just want to make sure that's accurate. And then you had mentioned a potential uh, earlier plan that had a rooftop patio. And um, if, if you can remind me, we at a previous meeting not too long ago changed and offered some additional flexibility to the open space standards. And did we um, I guess, um, not to make it too subjective of a question, but did we accidentally get rid of the rooftop open space in doing that? That would have otherwise been there if that standard had still been in place.
Yeah, Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Nelson. So uh, the rooftop, if, if they were to provide a rooftop patio, that would still count towards open space. Certainly that is allowed um, in the, it's actually in the multifamily residential standards. Uh, or in each zoning district actually dictates the amount uh, per unit. Um, so to answer the second question first, that would count. Um, this came up, the issue of the balconies. So these are balconies serving individual units. Uh, so it, it's contrary to um, the, the, the kind of use characteristic you described. And uh, I think that caught planning commission a little bit off guard is that maybe we just hadn't had a residential project that was receiving uh, flexibility or incentive to open space in quite some time. So they just hadn't reviewed that ordinance in a while. Uh, but the city code on, as by rights, uh, does allow uh, counting individual balconies towards uh, the, the amount of usable open space. Now, that being said, we haven't had uh, a project recently, to my knowledge, that uh, offered balconies to some units, but not all of the units. You know, thinking as an amenity, um, they probably would do it universally. Here, they're proposing to provide twelve along the southern elevation. Uh, there was some discussion in planning commission not to want to see balconies on the west side, just given the proximity and the height over the, the four plexes to the west, um, just from a noise uh, consideration. But uh, yeah, they are individual unit balconies. City code does allow um, a fifty-square foot balcony to count as a hundred and fifty square feet of your required open space per balcony. So um, the sense I got from planning commission is that that's something that they want to look at to potentially uh, change in the future. But it has been historically used for quite some time, I believe.
All right. Uh, thank you for that information. I'd, I appreciate it because I, I think is, is one area that is of concern to me. So appreciate that.
Anything else, Councilmember Loman? Or excuse me, Councilmember Nelson, uh, anything else? No? Okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember Loman.
Okay, yeah, not a problem. Uh, so uh, just two real quick things here. Uh, so with the um, the reduction in the storage uh, units that it comes with this, uh, that's part of the incentive that we have uh, uh, as a part of this plan. I mean, this is uh, we, we, we live in a city that uh, a community that people are interested in living in. And uh, um, in order to get these reductions and get this type of affordable housing, that's part of the, the tools that we kind of go about. Uh, uh, we offer to our developers to try to bring those, bring those rates down so we can get the affordability. Is that, is my understanding uh, correct in that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, thank you for that question. I mean, if you look at the uh, ye- yes, they are utilizing uh, residential storage. And yes, that is a cost-saving measure uh, to the developer. Um, this particular development is not requesting a as steep of a storage reduction as maybe some developers have been interested in uh, the past. Um, they would be required, if they were just meeting the baseline standard, to provide one unit and one storage unit per residential unit, so sixty-eight. They're proposing forty units. The incentive that they are eligible for under the O H O, they would be allowed to create seventeen storage units. So, you know, by providing ten per unit, I would argue, and I'd let the developer speak for themselves, I suppose. But I, it seems to me that they off, they provide some, or they place some value in having residential storage in their development. Um, if you just think about, you know, what that space could be utilized, otherwise it certainly could add to the space of uh, residential units, potentially even to the degree of adding some units to a project or be utilized as amenity spaces. So um, yeah, they're requesting a small reduction. Um, they would be eligible for a larger reduction, but they're not going that far.
Let me just go one step there because hey, there's some folks who don't maybe understand that our, our city is kind of an outlier in terms of how we handle storage. When we look at the general marketplace around uh, where we are uh, in the Twin Cities market, that uh, uh, by doing this reduction, we're really are only moving ourselves closer to what the other suburban communities that are around us kind of have from a storage. I, i- is my understanding of that, the marketplace right? I mean, I'm no developer, but uh, um, just uh, uh, I just, I heard a comment earlier and I wanted to address that because I think some folks are just not quite understanding what, what's happening here in Bloomington with this, this storage uh, piece.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. Mayor, Mayor Bussie, thank you. Uh, what I would say to that is I, I know that there are long-range staff in planning and there's other staff in planning who are actually researching uh, the various communities specifically. Um, so I don't want to speak into proportionality or numbers of what, you know, how many other cities require storage. But what I do know is that there are uh, many other communities that do not require storage, that it is more of a market-driven amenity uh, put within residential buildings. Now, I'm sure there are some communities that do require it. And uh, it has been a part of Bloomington's multifamily development uh, history um, for a long time. Um, and certainly there's some advocates for it, you'll find within staff as well, um, that it does have value. Um, but yes, you're correct that there are communities that just let the market decide what amenities get put within a residential mult, high-density residential development.
No, I can't completely entirely respond to that, that particular person uh, that spoke earlier today. But I just want to just say that uh, there, there's certainly trade-offs and I, and I'll take this trade-off. Moving on to my next question. Um, is uh, in terms of this, this driveway, in terms of the, the buffering of that, uh, can we just look at that just a little bit? I just want to be sure. Um, and really what my question is, is we did something similar to this, I think on a hundred and eighth street near, near uh, France Avenue. Uh, it seems like kind of the same kind of setup. And what I wanted to know is how that performed uh, on a hundred and eighth street, if you know what I'm talking about. We put in a, a kind of close to Willie McCoy's uh, kind of area. It's not exactly like this, but it, it's, it's, it has similar uh, uh, setup.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Councilmember Loman. Are you referring to the emergency access at one oh eight place? Is that the driveway you're thinking of?
I thought, I thought that was the driveway. I thought they had a driveway like this that went into their basement, but maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe I'm thinking of an earlier draft of.
No, that, yeah, you're correct on that. Um, they do, I, I'm sorry, I got confused with Councilmember Nelson's question about emergency access. Uh, they do, I mean, the, they driveways, you know, it, it's a little tight and it goes, it, it goes down in grade, obviously. But um, you know, the engineers have looked at it. It meets the, the criteria on the grading plan for slope and for uh, the turning radius. So I think it works.
Any issues at all with winter at all? I mean, did that, I mean, any noise issue or, or complaints from the neighbors at all? I mean, I, I guess, so this is similar to that. I'm just curious, you know, if, if that worked, then I'm, I'm okay with this, but I wanted to just, just, just check.
Yeah, not, not that I'm aware of, no. Um, I'm, I'm not aware of those concerns. Certainly, snow removal can be tricky on something like that, but they'll have to have an experienced operator who uh, knows how to clear snow. And um, one thing that does come up in engineering is there's, you know, concern about uh, the stormwater drains in the basement, that they be connected to the, uh, that they keep stormwater out of those floor drains. But um, no, I didn't, I didn't hear any other issue other than that.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Council additional questions? I know we have the applicants here and so I, I know they might want to address some of the questions that have been brought up. Uh, I will ask one question very quickly. Maybe the applicant can answer or at least provide some uh, insight into this. Just looking at the um, the on the list of incentives, I, there's, there's at least ten incentives that um, the applicants are applying for. And I think that's, I don't know if we've ever had that many before. I mean, up to and including the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the TIF requirements, uh, in addition to all of these. Um, and I think it's just a good example or a good uh, a good view of the council at this point, basically putting our money where our mouths are in terms of doing this. I mean, this is, this is a, a substantial uh, use of our tools and incentives. And the payback is then a, a significant number of uh, units that, that go deep into area AMI. And I think it's a, it's an important note to um, to bring forward. It's just important to realize that, yes, there are some, there's, there's some significant tools and incentives that are being used here, but there is some payback with it as well. And, and Mr. Johnson brought that up in terms of the um, the, the trade-offs, the back and forth between the benefits as opposed to the uh, the possible negative impact. So it, it's worth taking a look at and, and realizing. Uh, before we open up the, the public hearing, um, the uh, the applicant would like to say anything? Any, anything from, from you as well?
Yeah, this is Paul from um, Royder Walton Development. Uh, thank you for having me, Mayor and council members. And thank you for Nick for your detailed um, summary of the project. That was great. Um, this is an important project to us. We have a majority of two and three bedrooms uh, here that are connected to transit and connected to jobs. And when we talk about affordable housing, that's the main thing we're trying to do is connect working families to transit and to jobs and help control um, the, the monthly burden they have from housing uh, and transit. And so we think this site is unique. Um, it's a one-point-two acre site, so it's small. Um, and in order to develop sites like this across the city, um, I think you need to see some of these incentives that we're talking about. So I think you'll see with the O H O that you've passed, that you'll, you'll start to see more projects get proposed like this. Um, so that's, that's exciting. Um, I think we have our architect on the line too, if you have any specific questions for us on the open space. Um, we are also talking about locating a, a tot lot in the northwest corner. Um, we know that we're a little short on that uh, on that area and that we're going to make up with balconies. Um, but we're also going to be providing um, a fenced-in playground with some uh, equipment for, for kids in the northwest corner of the site. So I'll, I will uh, leave it there and be available for any questions.
Council, any questions of Mr. Keenan or the architect who is available as well? Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Carter.
Uh, thank you. So I um, am pretty excited about this project. I appreciate that it does align with our comp plan and provides a mix of affordability, including those three bedrooms and the thirty percent AMI. Um, I also do have a little bit of a concern around the open space. And I'll just be honest, I'm not a huge fan of meeting it with private balconies. Um, because in my mind, open space is accessible to all residents living in that area. Um, so I'd just be curious to know why you switched from having kind of more of that rooftop idea to the balcony idea. Um, and I do appreciate the fact that you'll be putting in, or the plan is to put in a playground, a fenced-in playground.
Yeah, it was, it was really cost-driven unfortunately. Yeah, it was, it was really cost-driven unfortunately. Um, I'm not sure how much everyone pays attention to what's going on in the construction cost market right now, but the price of lumber and other materials are just sort of exploding. Um, and so the, the cost to run, to el, to run the elevator up to the rooftop and another egress was going to be about three hundred thousand dollars to have the rooftop patio. So it was just something that got eliminated as we're trying to get the project in budget, unfortunately.
I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
Council, anything additional? If not, I will open up our public hearing on item seven point two, which is a redevelopment proposal for eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line at this late hour, listening in, wishing to speak to item seven point two?
Zen, are you still there? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Zen, do we have any callers that wish to speak on agenda item seven point two?
Okay, if you wa, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Again, if you would like to speak or make a comment, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Thank you. No public comment at this time. You may continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no one on the line wishing to speak at the public hearing for item seven point two. Council, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, and I think I saw a second by Councilmember, was it Martin? Councilmember Martin with the second to close the public hearing. No further discussion? Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item seven point two. Council, additional questions or comments on this? Uh, a, a number of things have been brought up. I think we've talked about this in the past and have looked at different pieces of it. Uh, Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to ask, uh, the developer, uh, what the size of the playground area that he's, uh, mentioning, and where on the plan does that go? Or if Nick, uh, happens to know, he can shine in also.
Mr. Johnson or Mr. Keenan, where would the, where would the playlot go and, and what size would it be?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, I'll let the, uh, applicant speak to the design intent, but the sketch or the concept plan that they've considered so far would place it in the northwest portion of the site. Um, they're looking at an area that's probably around twenty-five-hundred, uh, square feet or so. There are some setback requirements for, uh, play equipment above four feet in height, so, uh, it, it does, uh, um, place some, uh, you know, uh, restrictions in terms of where the taller equipment can be. They certainly can put in lower equipment in areas a little bit further to the west and north. You know, this location, we've had discussions with the applicant. Um, the only other real logical location would be probably right next to the front door, uh, kind of replacing that patio or plaza area. Um, both kind of have different, uh, merits, uh, in terms of to look at. The key with the northwest location is just to ensure that it's got adequate, um, kind of eyes-on-the-street effect, if you will, adequate access, and then there's the, uh, there's the component of safety with respect to the fencing, uh, that would, uh, encircle the playground. The fencing has to be adequate, given the location of the driveway, uh, to the east.
Uh, thank you for, uh, preempting my question because I wanted to know if it needed fencing or not, so good anticipation on your part. Uh, in, in our standards for playgrounds, how many, uh, kids can a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot area, uh, reasonably, um, maintain? You know, is that, said enough for five or fifty or what's, what's the, uh, standard?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, I'm, I don't pretend to be a recreation, uh, expert by any means. Um, all I can say is that when this issue kind of first arose, uh, we did look at some other, uh, kind of comparable developments with comparable unit counts, and they provided a similar, uh, tot lot. Um, Erica Coleman and the HRA brought up a really good example of one. Um, so I think it's doable to serve a building of this type. More is always better, uh, of course, um, but I, I would be, I'd be guessing or kind of flying blind in terms of a exact ratio of how big a space serves how many X number of kids.
But, but what I hear you saying is, is that if we looked around the city and found, uh, uh, sixty-eight unit properties that, uh, they're functioning adequately with a twenty-five-hundred square foot play area.
Yeah, Councilmember Beloga, from not, not Bloomington-specific, uh, examples, um, we've looked at other developments in other cities, but yes, uh, the spirit of your question is correct. It's just, uh, not Bloomington local examples.
No, fair enough. Uh, last item is, is there's, there's not a requirement at this time for the developer to insert this play area into the development. Is it, am I correct in my memory of the, uh, conditions?
That's correct. Currently, there's no condition of approval being recommended by staff or planning commission that would require it. Um, and there's not an ordinance that requires a play or tot lot be provided for, uh, high-density residential use. It's more, uh, something that certainly has been a, a particular area of interest, um, in residential development, though we don't have an ordinance for it. So currently, no condition.
So, uh, can we ask the developer what his feelings are of making a condition for the addition of the play lot?
Mr. Keenan? And I don't know if you had the question, can, can we formalize the, the playlot? Instead of making it a good idea, just make it something that's actually going to get done?
Yeah, we have it in our budget already, so go, if you want to make that a condition of the approval, that's, that's fine.
I will, uh, then ask our, uh, city attorney to, uh, uh, draft, uh, um, an additional, uh, condition for that so that we can include that, uh, if this comes to an approval. Thanks, appreciate your cooperation on that.
Councilmember Colter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, excuse me, I just really wanted to, to sort of pipe in and, and say that, um, you know, I, I do share, in particular, the concerns about open space requirements being satisfied by the balconies. I, you know, I certainly get why that decision was made. Um, I, you know, I think maybe that's just something we need to, to think about in terms of our own standards. Um, in, you know, in addition to, you know, while obviously this, this proposal does request a, a, um, uh, uh, parking reduction, um, you know, I said before that I'm, I'm of the belief that we're probably overparked in this city in a, in a lot of ways, so, um, I, I think this is, is a really, really promising proposal, in particular, um, as has been noted, the, the, um, the numbers of multiple bedroom units is, is in particular very challenging to find at, uh, lower affordability levels, so I'm, I'm really glad to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmembers, before we move on here, what I would like to do is move, uh, that we extend our cutoff time for council work from eleven PM until midnight. Give us ourselves the extra hour in hopes that we won't use the full extra hour. But rather than coming back to it again, I'd like to, uh, to move that we extend our, our adjournment time until midnight.
Second, Councilmember Lohman.
Motion and a second to, for this meeting, extend our adjournment time to midnight, again with the hope that we're out of here before then. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much for that. I, we've got a couple more things we've got to get done yet tonight and appreciate your patience and your stamina and your willingness to stick it out. So back to our issue at hand on item seven point two here. Any additional questions? See no additional questions. I would look for action, Council, and, uh, as mentioned earlier, we've got five different motions here. Uh, if you would be so inclined, does somebody want to take it on and move this one forward?
Mr. Mayor, I can go ahead and try anyway.
Councilmember Colter.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, in case PL twenty-twenty-one dash forty-three, I move to adopt a resolution approving a comprehensive plan map amendment to re-guide eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue South and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street from office to high-density residential.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Colter and a second by Councilmember Carter to do a comprehensive plan map amendment to re-guide eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street. Council, further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Colter.
Thank you, Mayor. On case PL twenty-twenty-one dash forty-three, I move to adopt an ordinance rezoning eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue South and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street from FD two to RM fifty PD.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Colter, a second by Councilmember Carter to, uh, rezone eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street from FD two to RM fifty. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Colter, do you want to keep moving ahead on this?
Might as well, Mr. Mayor, I'm on a roll.
Please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, in case PL twenty, twenty-twenty-one dash forty-three, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance rezoning eighty-twelve, uh, Old Cedar Avenue South and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street from FD two to RM fifty PD.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Colter, second by Councilmember Carter to authorize summary publication. And no further discussion? Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. In our next, uh, motion here, uh, Councilmember Colter, if you're willing to take this one on, this is where we have to make the additional, um, um, requirement, help me with, with condition, thank you. It, it's midnight, isn't it? It's getting close. In the additional condition, uh, requiring the, the, the tot lot of the playground. So, Ms. Manderscheid, do you have specific language, uh, prepared, or, or can we just say with the additional, uh, condition as, as described?
Do, uh, Mayor members, I have additional language. Um, it would be, uh, in the fourth, uh, the one that's coming up, it would at the end read, um, additionally, sorry, I got some suggestions coming in. Um, uh, and including a playground amenity as approved by the planning manager, and that would be, um, at, uh, prior to the CO.
Did we all, did we all hear that? We're having a hard time hearing here in the council chambers, I think. I don't know if...
Sorry, I'll say it again. Um, let me get it all in front of me so I can read it. In case PL two, twenty-twenty-one forty-three, having been ma, having been able to make the required findings, motion by, second by, to approve preliminary and final development plans for a sixty-eight-unit apartment building located at eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue South and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report, and including a playground amenity as approved by the planning manager prior to the certificate of occupancy.
Very good. I heard that much better, thank you. Councilmember Colter, would you like to make that motion as stated?
I will make the motion as stated by the city attorney.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Colter, and I think a second by Councilmember Beloga jumped in there to, uh, make the, um, the findings and approve the preliminary and final development plans and so on as stated by Ms. Manderscheid. Additional comments? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Colter, do you want to bring us in?
Might as well, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in case PL twenty-twenty-one dash forty-three, having been able to, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve a type-three preliminary plat and adopt a resolution approving a final plat to combine two unplatted lots into one platted lot located at A twelve Old Cedar Avenue South and eighteen-hundred East Eightieth Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements listed in the resolution.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Colter and a second by Councilmember Carter to approve the type-three preliminary plat and adopt the, uh, final plat as well to combine two unplatted lots. Additional comments? Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much for that. Uh, Mr. Keenan, when, uh, when are we talking groundbreaking here? When, what, what, what's the schedule coming up?
Uh, July, July first, we're hoped to be started.
Oh, fabulous.
So we'll, we'll start by demolishing the existing building and then start digging the hole.
Very good. Well, congratulations and thank you. Thank you for your work on this and thanks for, uh, your work pulling all the pieces together, because I know this has been a lot of different pieces of the puzzle to, to make this all work and, and make this all happen, and I'm very glad to see it moving forward. So, well done and...
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers as well.
Thanks much. Mr. Johnson, thank you. Mr. Verbrugge wants to know, is that a Fender guitar behind you? Or... You're muted. We're not sure now. It's, we'll, we'll forever wonder.
It's a Ma, it's a Martin, thank you.
A Martin, I'm sorry, I thought it was a Fender, my bad. Let's move on to item seven point three, which is, uh, another public hearing, and this is regarding the tax increment financing for the affordable housing development at eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue South. Uh, Erica Coleman, our HRA administrator is here with us. Ms. Coleman, thanks for staying with us up late tonight, appreciate it, and, um, thanks for, for leading us through this. Ms. Coleman?
Good evening. Yes, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator, so eighty-twelve Old Cedar, and I'll repeat quite a bit of information that you just heard, so we'll go through it. Uh, this is for the proposed tax increment financing housing district of eighty-twelve Old Cedar Housing Project. Here are the renderings of the four-story sixty-eight-unit building at Eightieth and Old Cedar Avenue. Just wanted to highlight, uh, the proximity of where this location is, how close it is to parks, trails, transit, mall America, grocery, and also, uh, connecting to workforce jobs in the area. Again, this is a proposed development by Reuters Walton, four-story sixty-eight-unit building with a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, affordable at a hundred percent, a hundred percent affordable at sixty percent AMI, which in twenty-twenty-one income limits is about sixty-two-thousand-nine-hundred forty dollars. As you can see, nine percent are at thirty percent AMI, twelve percent at fifty percent AMI, and seventy-nine percent at sixty percent AMI. I provided what those, uh, incomes are in twenty-twenty-one right now, what the limits would be for a family of four. Also, there was a question earlier about the breakdown in bedroom sizes, so I did want to make sure I added that. And then the onsite amenities, uh, leasing, fitness center, community room, conference room, underground heated parking, and as you have discussed and heard, a tot lot, uh, which also was going to be included in the development agreement. So I'm glad we're all on the same page. a tot lot, uh, which also was going to be included in the development agreement. So I'm glad we're all on the same page. It is proposed that if approved, construction will begin July twenty twenty-one, as Mr. Keenan has already mentioned, with the completion by July of twenty twenty-two. So the total development cost is about twenty-one point one million dollars for this project. Uh, the sources in the development are a construction of perm loan, owner equity, the low-income housing tax credit bonds of eleven million awarded by Minnesota Management and Budget, uh, have a TIF application for one point three-five-three and an Affordable Housing Trust Fund application for nine hundred seventy-five thousand. We will just be discussing the TIF and we will have to come back for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund um, when we have the documentation and the resolution to present. So uh, tax increment financing, as you know, it's another method of capturing tax base growth resulting from a new development where the increment captured is to pay for public costs and take eligible costs related to the development. The fixed term for capture uh, and property owners within the TIF district pay taxes like all other property owners. The growth, the value growth and tax sharing, it is broken up between the different taxing districts, city, county, school district, and other taxing jurisdictions. And it is for the term of the um, of the um, excuse me, of the district, so twenty-six years is what we um, are looking at from the time the district's created to the time district is terminated, and then the increment uh, that is collected is based on the property increase in the property value from the base value currently. So pursuant to Minnesota statutes, there are certain findings that must be included in order to um, approve a TIF district. This is the boundary area, again, East Eightieth Street and Old Cedar that must qualifies, to qualify as a housing TIF district. Uh, proposed development, in the opinion of the city, would not be reasonably be expected to occur but for uh, the use of tax increment financing. So it has to pass the but-for test, which it has. The TIF plan will afford maximum opportunity, so consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole. And then the TIF plan conforms to the general plans for development of the city as a whole, which it does based on planning commission on April ninth, adopted a resolution approving proposed redevelopment plan and TIF plan as it is consistent with the general plan for the development of the city, highlighting um, particular goals in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. Uh, goal number two, provide a range of housing choices, and goal number three, uh, meeting two strategies, provide affordable housing to serve local demand. So in order for it to receive TIF assistance, the project will need to conform to requirements. So no more than twenty percent of the total square footage can be used for non-residential uses. That is true of this proposed project. And it either is twenty percent of the units of occupied by tenants at fifty percent AMI or less, or forty percent of the units at ten at sixty percent AMI or less. And this project in particular meets the at least forty percent of the units occupied by tenants at sixty percent AMI or less. And so uh, the OHO incentives, just wanted to highlight, as you've already heard, uh, it does qualify as a housing tax TIF district, excuse me, uh, with a proposed pay-as-you-go TIF note of one point three-five-three million with interest of three point five percent. Uh, bringing forward later um, would be the Affordable Housing Trust Fund loan application of nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars with a three to three point two-five percent interest. And then, as you have noted earlier, the OHO incentives that have gone um, to make this project be able to happen. And so I wanted to highlight um, that with this project, we would be really e- exceeding our goals, um, to tell the truth, for twenty thirty housing goals. Yes, we have a ways to go for four hundred and forty-five extremely low-income units, but this project is increasing that right now. Mind you, this is twenty twenty-one, and these are goals by twenty thirty. So I have to say we're on a great track. Uh, this would also provide additional uh, fifty percent units. Yes, we are exceeding the number for uh, sixty percent, but that's not a bad thing because that's showing you how many people actually do need it. Um, and so, and then also our market rate units, which do not apply to this project at all. But just to give you a quick um, snapshot of where we are in terms of meeting our housing goals and on track to exceeding them by a large margin. So next steps, tonight, this is the public hearing and consider considering the action before you. On the twenty-seventh, the HRA will consider the action on the TIF plan, the district, and the TIF agreement. May third, we would come back to city council for considering the resolution for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund draw. May eleventh, HRA considers the action of development and pending all approvals, begin construction summer twenty twenty-one. I will stand for any questions. Uh, and here's the recommendation on the screen after the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Counsel, questions of Ms. Coleman? Seeing no questions. Then I will open the public hearing on item seven point three, which is regarding the tax increment financing for affordable housing development at eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone who's like to speak to item eight, uh, seven point three?
Let me check, Mr. Mayor. Zen, do we have any callers on the line?
There are no participants connected, connected at this time. No public comment.
We have no callers on the line waiting to speak on this item. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Don't move, councilmember Loman.
Second, Mark.
We have a motion by councilmember Loman and a second by councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item seven point three. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven uh, zero to close the public hearing on item seven point three. Counselors, any questions of Ms. Coleman? I would appreciate if you could put the slide back up very quickly, Ms. Coleman, for the um, the numbers of different units and different uh, AMI levels, just very quickly. And the reason I ask specifically is because um, it it's not something to to zip pass, zip pass, despite the hour, despite um, I think how we're all a little bit worn out, but uh, it's something to be proud of. The numbers that we have there for our twenty thirty goals and the the definite steps and and work that we're putting into this and making the steps we're making toward these goals, I think is very impressive. And I want to thank staff for their work on it, thank the council for their commitment to this. I mean, this is, this is very impressive, and I don't think there are a lot of our neighbors, a lot of communities uh, around us that could 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 boast these numbers and could boast these percentages trying to reach their twenty thirty housing goals. And remember, these housing goals are set by the Met Council, and every city in the metropolitan area are given these goals to reach. And um, let me just say that I think that Bloomington is probably working as hard as any community in this, in the Twin Cities to reach those goals. So um, well done. Thank, thank you to the council and thank you to the to the staff for working on that. Any additional questions, staff or council? Hearing none. I would look for action on this, counsel.
Well, if anybody else will, I'll stand up and do it, Mayor.
Councilmember Loman.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt the resolution attached to the staff report approving the redevelopment plan for the project area, establishment of the eighty-twelve Old Cedar Tax Increment Financing District, Housing District within the project area, and the adoption of a tax increment financing plan relating thereto to be consistent with the general plan for the development of the city of Bloomington.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Loman, I heard a second by councilmember Martin to uh, to move forward with the redevelopment plan for the project area and establish the eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue Tax Increment Financing District within the project area. Counsel, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga.
Aye.
Thank you. Carter.
Aye.
Lo- um, Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you for your work on this, and again, thanks for moving this forward. And this is an exciting project and uh, one that I'm looking forward to moving forward, and I think uh, Mr. Keenan was right. I think we're going to be seeing many more uh, of this type of project as uh, folks take a look at our opportunity housing ordinance and ways that they can make it work. So, well done. We can move on to item seven point four, uh, which is another public hearing. This is the adoption of reference ordinance. It was actually on the schedule for last week, and it was continued from last week to this week's agenda. And what I would like to do is make a motion to continue it again, and we'll continue it to the uh, agenda for next weekend on four twenty-six.
Second, councilmember.
Mayor, just before uh,
Ms. Manderscheid.
Actually get that that gets completed, can we open the public hearing and then continue it?
I'm sorry. Yes, we can. I I I thought, you're right, we did not open it last week. So, so what I will do right now.
I just, uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I just want to be clear because the memo says that it was opened and continued last Monday, so I think we just need to continue.
Continue the the open public hearing, yes. Thank you, Jamie.
So I would move that we can continue
I'll second the motion.
This open public hearing till four twenty-six. Councilmember Baloga with the second on that item. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We'll continue this. We'll take this up next week. Move on to item seven point five, which is another public hearing. And this is a public hearing to approve our twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Ms. Coleman.
Thank you. I will go ahead and share my screen. All right, so our twenty twenty-one CDBG action plan, public hearing, um, city council. Uh, so the action plan uh, is for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-four consolidated plan. There's an annual action plan that has to be done every year. The program year is July one, twenty twenty-one through July thirty, through June thirty of twenty twenty-two. The grant amount for this program year is four hundred fifty-eight thousand sixty-eight dollars. That's a three hundred eighty-dollar increase over the award for twenty twenty. The funded activities are housing, homeownership opportunities, preservation, public service, fair housing administration. Under homeownership Opportunities, uh, West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, or WALT, their Homes Within Reach Program, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for funding for two purchased rehab homes in Bloomington to be uh, rehabilitated and sold to income-qualified uh, owner occupants at or below eighty percent AMI, which is secured through a deed of covenants, and so there is a resale um, restriction that it must be resold to uh, income-qualified households. Uh, three homes have been purchased since January twenty twenty-one in Bloomington by WALT. Uh, under preservation, the single-family rehabilitation uh, program that we have is on slate to serve thirty homeowners with an anticipated uh, old loan repayments, and then lead-based paint abatement. Public service, uh, this is continuing uh, to fund our senior community services, household and maintenance for the elderly program, better known as HOM. Fair housing, uh, we are part of the Fair Housing Implementation Council, which is uh, a metro-wide for housing um, services. The city will allocate funds for the continuation of fair housing services in the suburban metro, which includes Bloomington. These funds will be used for education, research, housing discrimination testing, and enforcement and fair housing counseling and clearing house activities. And then administration, city costs related to administering the CDBG activities, which is eligible for up to twenty percent of the grant. This is just a breakdown of the twenty twenty allocation, um, the carryover from twenty nineteen, the uh, estimated program income from twenty twenty, and then the estimated budget from twenty twenty, uh, as this has been brought to you before. And so we are getting to the twenty twenty carryover um, from single-family rehab, two hundred fifty thousand. And then the actual allocation based on the four hundred fifty-eight thousand three hundred seventy, seventy-eight dollar award. Um, and so we estimate four hundred thousand dollars for uh, single-family rehabilitation loan repayment, which is um, instrumental in reaching the thirty homes. Um, so it'd be a total of eight hundred eighteen thousand, so really maximizing the grant allocation from CDBG to continue the activities that the HRA um, and the city have done. And so the next steps is, um, we're here this evening, uh, go to the HRA board, um, excuse me, it went to the HRA board on the twenty-third as a informational item, and then on the thirteenth, uh, it came, went to Hennepin County Board for their public hearing because we are a part of we're a part of um, the consortium with Hennepin County, excuse me. And so we're here tonight for the public hearing. By the end of the month of April thirtieth, written public comment period ends. It is currently open for written public comment period. And then May twenty twenty-one, submission to HUD for approval to um, be able to enact for the program beginning year of July one, so at least thirty to forty-five days for that. And so now is a public hearing, and I'll stand for any questions and suggested motion on your screen.
Counsel, any questions of Ms. Coleman regarding the Community Development Block Grant Action Plan? I do not see hands going up. Oh, councilmember Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I'm just curious for for the program with WALT, um, how are those low-to-moderate-income families identified and prioritized for the opportunity to purchase those homes?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Bussie and uh, councilmember Carter. So when going through land trust program, they would need to apply to the land trust. Usually land trusts have a relationship with um, in-house realtors or other parties as well as financial wellness providers and counselors. And so there is an application that they have to apply to income qualifying, submit the information required. Uh, there is usually education around that to understand that the property is held in a trust, so the land is not actually ever owned by the homebuyers, which goes towards the affordability. And then from there, um, the process to uh, purchase. So typically, what I have seen um, is a land trust property is actually posted on the multiple listing service with the realtor, but it is listed as a land trust property, which means that only certain people can apply, um, and anybody that applies must be income-qualified.
Got it, got it. I just was thinking about um, you know, our goal, you know, our priority as a council around homeownership and it addressing the disparities in homeownership. Um, and didn't know if there was an opportunity here in some way to influence this program um, and the way that it's administered and people are chosen. But it sounds like um, that criteria is there, and I I I'd be interested, maybe like not now, but in the future to have a conversation around. Is it meeting, it can, is it serving that purpose too of addressing the the disparis- disparity in homeownership? Or is it just not the appropriate program? Or, you know, is there an opportunity to influence? So.
Actually, I I can answer that right now, and we can have a discussion later if you'd like. Um, there is opportunity for uh, engagement and coordination to make sure that uh, more people know about the opportunity, different opportunities to uh, obtain affordable homeownership. Um, if you're talking about uh, the racial disparities in homeownership, um, this is an uh, option or opportunity as well as it's advertised as such, but also recognize that there are conversations around um, enclosing the homeownership disparity gap, the racial disparity gap, to not allow for um, Black Indigenous people of color to own their land is also a different, there's some cultural pieces that come into to play uh, when that comes, but yes. Uh, there are many opportunities that I err on the side of. People should just be informed about what's available, and then they can make an informed decision on the options.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And similarly, councilmember Carter, I don't know if you saw in the Star Tribune over the weekend a story uh, from Edina with a, the land trust program they have in Edina basically to save houses from knockdowns. And um, a- again, set up in the same way that they, the the house is for sale, but the land trust owns the land underneath it. And the covenant includes that they cannot sell or or knock down the house, basically, and and it just, it provides, considering that um, I think the average new home price in Edina is over six hundred thousand now, that uh, some of these smaller um, existing homes, they want to preserve them as much as they possibly can. So it's, um, it, it's an interesting thought, an interesting way of doing it, uh, interesting solution to that problem that they have in Edina. Additional questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. We've got a public hearing here to approve our 2021 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Ms. Wilson, did anybody call in to talk about, uh, item 7.5?
Hi Zen, do we have any callers at this time?
We don't have any callers connected at this time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no callers connected. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing on item 7.5. Hearing no further counsel discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.5. Counsel, additional questions? Any thoughts, anything to bring up on the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan?
Hearing none, Mr. Mayor. I will, uh, move to approve the Community Development Block Action Block Grant Program 2021 Action Plan.
Second, Councilmember Loman.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Loman to approve the Community Development Block Grant Program 2021 Action Plan. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Was 7.6 opened last week also?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. I apologize for having my microphone open there with the, the little cross talk. I apologize for that. Motion carries seven zero, uh, item 7.5, our 2021 CDBG Action Plan is approved at the city level. Thank you very much, Ms. Coleman. Appreciate it and the work that you do in the HRA. If we can move now to item 7.6, which is another public hearing. It's an ordinance for landscape and tree preservation updates. Uh, this is to be continued. What I would like to do is open the public hearing and continue this to next week, uh, 4/26. So I will, right now I will open the public hearing on item 7.6, ordinance regarding our landscape and tree preservation updates. And with the public hearing open, I would move that we continue this to, uh, the 4/26 meeting of the Bloomington City Council. Look for a second.
Second.
I have a motion by the mayor, the second by Councilmember Car- uh, Councilmember Martin to continue this item to the April 26 city council meeting with the public hearing open. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. This item continued until April 26th. Move on item 7.7, which is our final public hearing of the evening for a new on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license at Highland Greens Golf Course.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a standard liquor license issuance that the council sees on a regular basis. As you'll recall, the city's entered into an agreement for Three Rivers Park District to operate Highland Greens Golf Course uh, this season and moving forward. And so they are seeking a license to sell 3.2, or 3.2 beer. The city had a similar license when we were the operator of that golf course and it's simply providing Three Rivers the opportunity to make the same types of sales now that they are the operator of the course. Everything checks out by our licensing section and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. So we had a 3.2 license at the Highland previously under city ru- under city control and under city, uh, jurisdiction. And now we'd, uh, look to approve a 3.2 license for, um, for Three Rivers Park District at Highland Greens as well. Counsel, any questions? Hearing none. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on item 7.7, a new on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license for Highland Greens Golf Course. Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Zen, this is our last public hearing for the night. Have we picked up any callers by any chance?
We don't have any participants connected, ma'am.
All right. Thank you for your assistance tonight, Zen. You can go ahead and disconnect the line. That concludes our public hearings.
Thank you, Zen. Thank you for staying with us this evening. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Counsel, no one coming forward to speak at item, uh, on item 7.7. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 7.7. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item 7.7. Any additional questions, ma- counsel? If not, I'd look for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the issuance of a 3.2% malt liquor license to Three Rivers Park District doing business as Highland Greens Golf Course.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Martin to approve the on-sale 3.2 malt liquor license at, for Three Rivers Park District doing business as Highland Greens Golf Course. Further questions, comments? Seeing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item eight, organizational business. And given the late hour, I am going to move that we, uh, that we, uh, table the item 8.1 until a further a future meeting, uh, 4/26 or the first meeting in May, I think would be the most logical.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, uh, work out the agenda tomorrow night or tomorrow morning, uh, at staff. I believe that we'll be able to accommodate this item next Monday. And, uh, based on the timeline, I think there's, uh, some desire to keep moving on it.
I agree. I would agree. So I would move that we, uh, we continue this item until 4/26.
Second.
I have a motion to, uh, and a second by Councilmember Coulter to continue item 8.1 until our April 26 meeting in the Bloomington City Council. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item 8.2, I think we're going to forego our legislative update for this evening that of being a weekly update and we'll get, uh, something I'm sure next week from, um, Mr. Ruddlang and company. Move to item 8.3, our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge, anything this evening?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, nothing to report this evening.
Counsel, anything to bring forward on item 8.3?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I do. I just want to remind, it's late.
He was playing with us. He does have something.
In case somebody does check in, um, I, I think that you mentioned it under the volunteer proclamation earlier tonight, but just want to remind people again about the, the volunteer drive-through on, uh, a recognition event on Saturday that, um, you know, we, we do appreciate the work that our volunteers do. And, uh, we want to make sure that we do something more this year than we're able to do next year. So, uh, hopefully folks will be able to get out on Saturday and, and, uh, get at least a little bit of gratitude uh, from us for what they're doing to improve the community.
Couldn't agree more. So yes, you know who you are. If you volunteered the last couple of years, 2019 or 2020, please join us Saturday morning up at Creekside. Counsel, I hope you're all joining me as well to, to stand there and wave and say hello to folks as they come through. It's always a great time. Couple of hands up, Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just be very brief and I, I may be surprising, surprising some folks with this information, but, um, over the course of our meeting tonight, it was announced that former Vice President Walter Mondale has passed away. And, um, he, his was the, the very first name that I ever learned in politics. Um, and he, of course, was a, a real treasure for our entire state. So, um, I just wanted to take a moment and, and recognize the life and, and the service of Walter Mondale.
Here, here. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just quickly, I wanted to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Loman had made earlier in our conversation regarding our legislative agenda and taking a look at how we might support efforts statewide, um, uh, to, uh, you know, look at criminal charges for conversion therapy or other support for a statewide ban or any of that type of stuff. I know there are organizations, NAMI and others that are working on that. And, um, if, if it makes sense for us to be supportive of that, I think it's worth a conversation. Obviously we're past deadlines and things like that in this legislative session. So I think we can push that, um, off until we review that later in the fall. But I thought, I thought that was a good comment and a good idea to take a look at, uh, at what we're doing there. Um, and I would slightly broaden it to take a look at what we can do to support the, um, the, the youth in our community as well as the adults that, that need mental health services to our public health department. And I'm proud of the work that the city has done on that front and, um, but I think that there's more that can be done because we know there's a lot of people struggling out there and want, you know, decent, safe, um, healthcare and, you know, it's, it's a, you know, candidly, it's a real challenge to find, uh, particularly for kids, uh, a provider, a therapist right now. Um, if you can find one with an opening, you may have to wait months before they actually can get you in to see you and, um, you know, I don't think we're going to fix that overnight, but what can we do to help solve that issue, I think is important. I think that's a lot of what I heard today is that, uh, you know, people want someone they can trust to talk to, uh, and, uh, I think we can play a role in that. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Loman.
Excellent. Thank you for bringing that forward again, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Loman. Appreciate it. Mr. Verbrugge, I think, uh, from a legislative standpoint, it's probably late in the game, but I do think, yes, this is something if we're, again, we're going to put our money where our mouth is, this would be something that we would want to add to our legislative agenda for next year.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, uh, Mr. Ruddlang was, uh, watching during that item and took note of the conversation uh, regarding interest in pursuing something legislatively. Uh, we'll do two things. One, we'll check and see if there is anything, uh, relevant this session uh, and would bring that back for council discussion if our current policies don't speak to it. And then, uh, we will obviously review this, uh, and bring it back as part of the legislative platform considerations for 2022 as well.
Very good. Appreciate it. Counsel, anything else tonight?
Mayor, I just had one other thing.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. And I don't have a lot of details on this, but, um, I, I'm sure there's a lot of people in our community that are kind of reeling from the fact that, um, Jefferson, um, hockey coach, uh, uh, was killed in St. Paul this weekend, um, in an altercation there. And so just wanted to express my sympathies to, um, the students, the other, uh, people that work with him and, and, uh, his family and all that. So kind of a really tragic, uh, unfortunate situation it looks like there. So.
Agreed. There's just too much bad news lately. It's getting to be too much. Counsel, anything else? I appreciate your sticking in this out. It was a long one tonight. It was a lot of work tonight and, uh, between council, staff, community weighing in. Uh, this was, there, there was a lot that went into tonight and I, we, we got some good work done and I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's, um, attention and attention to detail and their perseverance as we work through this. So thank you all very much. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Loman to adjourn. No further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
We're going.